With you, Maury. It's time for us to take a short break. And when we return, we will continue the discussion of the future of senior services. Please stay tuned. We'll be right back. Just a minute.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode. By clearing brush 200 feet from your home, you create a barrier, lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire.
I'll still be here when you get back.
Get the message. Be prepared.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. I'm Paul Peterson, and today we are discussing the future of senior services and how we can continue to provide for an ever-growing number of seniors with decreasing resources from our government. Our guests include our good friend Laura Trejo, General Manager of the Los Angeles Department of Aging, Dr. Marie Torres, Senior Vice President of Government Relations at the Ultimate Health Services, and Rigo Saborio, Executive Director of St. Barnabas's Senior Services. Laura, back to you. Rigo brought this up before the break. How do we marshal those very people that we serve so they can be a more effective political voice?
I think that we have various tools that we can be using. Disseminating information is critical. One of the things that we did recently, when the governor released his proposed budget, we actually informed seniors across the entire region.
And they showed up, didn't they?
And they actually, more than showed up. We had over 27 senior centers in Los Angeles County holding demonstrations outside of their centers where over 3,500 seniors participated in what we were calling a stand-in in front of the centers. We were really pleasantly surprised at the level of willingness of older adults to be engaged in protecting the services that they were utilizing and that they need or that they anticipate needing in the future. Their stories were very, very eloquent, and I think very much to the point, that this is what keeps them at home and keeps them independent. So we've begun to really look at older adults themselves. We need their voices. We need their families. And we saw the tremendous outpouring of support. And so that gives us, I think, the impetus to continue to develop those opportunities for the community to be involved themselves. And so we're very proud of sort of the direction we're heading in trying to educate the public about the impact that these cuts will have on their lives.
Exactly. And nobody gets to sit this one out. There is no place in our society, top to bottom, no matter where you live, where you're going to escape the consequences of these kind of budgetary cuts on people we care about who work their whole lives with the expectation, and I think it's a reasonable expectation, of having someone to care for them. We know this, yes.
Paul, can I just mention, because of course, we had several of our centers do the stand-ins, but we also, one of the techniques that we used with our seniors at our various adult health care and care management programs is that we mobilized them to, we would provide transportation, and we would just show up to the office of the elected official, no appointments. No, no, they loved it. They loved it. We would go in there full force, eight to 10 at a time, maybe, and we would tell our stories. The clients would share their stories. It got very emotional at times for the clients to share their stories, because many of them are very sick and frail and have disabilities. And so when the staff would be meeting or the elected official, I mean, they were just overwhelmed to see that people would just be showing up. Every hour, every couple of hours, we had another group go in. And I think that was very effective.
It was very effective. And it is also true that many of our seniors kind of cut their adult teeth on political action. And this is not something we get to give away. But we're going to take another little break here, because Rigo, you brought along some tape for us to see some of the services, so we all know what we're talking about. And Aging in L.A. recently took a tour of the St. Barnabas Senior Services. And Rigo, please be our tour guide as we look inside your community.
Absolutely. This is our reception area of our building that we moved into in 1987. These are photographs of our staff who are multilingual and multicultural, reflecting the community that we serve. We speak over eight languages. The major languages being Korean, Spanish, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese. And very dedicated staff. This is our atrium area. We like to sort of give a home feel to our center. So as people walk in, as you can see, there's magazines and areas and sofas where folks can lounge around, and so that it's a home away from home. And also, there's opportunities for our home theater. We show movies every three days, or three times a week. In addition, this is the cyber café that I was mentioning to you. As you can see, there are tables there set up so people can engage. This is one of our nutrition sites at our main building. As I mentioned, we have six nutrition sites, so congo meal sites, and here's one of them at our main building. We serve about 80 meals a day at that location, about 350 meals per day on all sites combined. Very nutritious meal. Of course, there are standards that we have to meet in terms of the daily requirements and so on and so forth. And this is where we prep our meals. And you can see, we work also with Title V programs, and we hire the Title V volunteers to work with our nutrition program. Here's the upstairs of our building. We use this particular area, open space, to provide Tai Chi classes, exercise classes, fall prevention class. And these offices that you're looking at here, sort of a reflection, obviously, of the staff of the various cultural backgrounds, but they're also there to provide case management, social services. Here's the transportation. And here's one of our physicians that leases one of our spaces that provides medical attention to our clients once a week. And this is a shot here of our S. Mark Daper Foundation Adult Health Care Center. We're very proud of this center. This building was completed in 2003. Again, we have a very diverse service staff, speaking many languages on site, again reflective of the population that we serve. And here, as you can see, there's quite a bit of activities. There's occupational therapy, physical therapy. We also have a gardening area in the back as part of the occupational therapy. And here's one of our social workers working with one of our clients. And here's a quiet room area as well. Again, the whole idea here is to try to set it up so that it's a home away from home, that home feeling, so that you don't, you know, the folks there who primarily have cognitive impairment that we serve in the site, you know, feel that they are at home.
Right. Wow. That's, it's really amazing. What's the mix of staff, paid staff, volunteer staff?
Well, we have about 43 paid staff, and we also then have about additional, about 20 volunteers that we have through Title V.
And I assume that there are many volunteer opportunities there?
Oh, there absolutely are volunteer opportunities. And in fact, I'm really, again, this is a difficult time to look for additional resources, but we've got to get creative, because I'm really looking for someone that I can hire on as full-time to be able to be a volunteer manager. Because there is so many seniors out there who really want to give back to the community. And there are so many needs that we have, particularly in these times where you have less to do more. And I think it's a great time to bring volunteers from the community to come in and help and address the needs of the community.
Laura, you know, for many years, I have said, these intergenerational programs are the ones I favor, the idea that youngsters, even very young youngsters, have a role to play in helping to care for our senior population, besides the love and wisdom that they're able to acquire. They can do so many things to help an elderly relative or even in a volunteer setting.
Absolutely. And many of our centers actually have placement for high school students doing social service hours.
Great. And those hours count, right?
Absolutely. Many of them are doing that work at daycares. Others are entire classes. For example, we've been working with elementary schools to write letters for isolated seniors to receive one during the holidays. They write letters or make cards, and we deliver them with a meal during the Christmas holiday. We utilize volunteers, families, entire families who dedicate a part of their Thanksgiving holiday to help us do a home-delivered meal for that day. We're very proud. That's entirely funded and operated by volunteers.
That's fantastic.
We also have an incredible volunteer program, which is really gaining statewide recognition, where we have a high school that works with a senior center, but primarily, these are development to disabled, young adults who help in the nutrition program at our multipurpose center. And so they're gaining work skills, but the other part they're getting, and they're gaining also tremendous socialization skills. The seniors loved having these young people, you know, really trying to be of help to them, and it's just an incredible sight to see.
One of the things, and I'm sure, Marie, you'll agree with me, is to end this isolation. These are not pockets of special needs people. These are our moms and our dads and our aunts and our uncles, and we need to include them.
Well, we all grew up with our grandparents around, and so it's very, very comfortable. It's natural, and that's what we need. But I wanted to make a comment on the volunteer aspect of involving youth in some of the settings.
Quickly, please.
Yes. Workforce development, future physicians, nurses, social workers, rehab therapists. That's what we need.
I got you. Well, I'm sorry that our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A., important conversations. Thank you so much to our guests, Laura Trejo, General Manager of the Los Angeles Department of Aging, Dr. Marie Torres, Senior Vice President of Government Relations at Ultimate Health Services, and Rigo Saborio, Executive Director of St. Barnabas's Senior Services. And now, it's time for today's senior stat shots. The U.S. Census Bureau has released data that highlight the staggering boom in the senior citizen population in the nation and the world. In the U.S., the senior citizen population appears to be headed to a 40% increase in the next five years due to the flooding of the senior ranks of baby boomers. The world's 65 and older population is projected to triple by mid-century, from 516 million folks in 2009 to 1.5 billion in 2050. In contrast, the world population under 15 is expected to increase by only 6% during the same period, from 1.83 billion to 1.93 billion. At this time, less than 8% of the world's population is 65 and older. But by 2030, the world's population of seniors is expected to reach 12%. And by 2050, that share is expected to grow to 16%. And that's today's senior stat shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life, and also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and your ideas for future programs. Please give us a call. The number's right there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas. We look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching. We'll see you the next time.
Thank you. And our first presentation will be from Council President Garcetti.
Are we good, John? Good to be here?
All right. Ready, ready.
I'll be on the bike in a frame.
Oh, she did. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Labons. Welcome, Mr. Labons. And good morning, ladies and gentlemen. And it is a real honor to welcome one of our world's preeminent teller of tales and Los Angeles's favorite son, the one, the only Ray Bradbury. Mr. Bradbury, yeah, right here. Mr. Bradbury hardly needs an introduction or a biography, but please indulge me as we celebrate a very special week here in Los Angeles and a very special birthday as well. Mr. Bradbury and I first met a few years ago when the mayor of Los Angeles launched One Book, One L.A. And Mr. Labons and I and Mayor Hahn were there on Hollywood Boulevard as Ray Bradbury got his star on the Walk of Fame. And we took Fahrenheit 451 to be the first book that the entire city read together. But as we know, Mr. Bradbury is the author of such classics as The Martian Chronicles and Fahrenheit 451, The Illustrated Man, Something Wicked This Way Comes, and Dandelion Wine. He's inspired minds, and he's moved souls for generations. And with the words, "Love what you do and do what you love," Mr. Bradbury has mentored and encouraged generations of writers and artists to indeed do just that, to follow their passions and their dreams and to do what moves them, as a result, bringing joy and thought to the lives of countless others, millions, tens of millions, hundreds of millions around the world, maybe even over a billion. Mr. Bradbury had his first short story published in 1940 at the age of 20. And shortly, at the age of 90, he will publish a new collection of short stories tentatively titled "Juggernaut: 70 Years of Writing." He pioneered the melding of the virtues of popular fiction and literary fiction, and today, he's internationally known and loved as a novelist, short story writer, essayist, playwright, screenwriter, and poet. You name the genre, and he has written it and written it well. He has been a steadfast and passionate champion of libraries here and across the globe. And this fall, he will be honored with a Champion of Literacy Award from the Walt Whitman Birthplace Association. He's been recognized as a literary treasure with such awards as a Pulitzer Prize, Special Citation for his distinguished, prolific, and deeply influential career, the French commandeur d'ordre de l'art et des lettres, which I think he might be wearing today, the National Book Foundation Medal for a distinguished contribution to American letters, the National Medal of Arts, and, as I mentioned, with a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Mr. Bradbury has been a resident of Los Angeles since 1934. In fact, he's almost as old as this building is and has as distinguished and as strong a place in our city as this great temple of democracy known as City Hall. He's been an unwavering lover and supporter of his adopted city. He once wrote, "Los Angeles is everything you want to be." A number of Angelenos and institutions have come together to stage events in honor of his 90th birthday on August 22nd, including our friends at the Writers Guild of America West, the Los Angeles Public Library, Central Library, the Paley Center for Media, the Planetary Society, and filmmakers who have created special works of art just in honor of Mr. Bradbury. Ray Bradbury's life and work have intrigued, thrilled, provoked, thought within countless people around the world, many of whom have declared that reading his books or hearing him speak changed their lives. So it is my honor to declare today with this council and the mayor that we declare August 22nd through August 28th, 2010, Ray Bradbury Week in the City of Los Angeles, and we encourage the residents of the city to celebrate this literary master's life and his work. Please, a round of applause for Ray Bradbury. And we have three other speakers that are with us today as well. Like to invite Louis Friedman from the Planetary Society to speak first, then we'll hear from Cynthia Shore from the Walt Whitman Association, and then our friend.
Mr. Garcetti.
All right. Steve is going to be our first speaker. My apologies. We'll reverse the order. So the instigator of Ray Bradbury Week, and then we'll hear from members afterwards, is a friend and no stranger to these council chambers, an activist with the Writers Guild is a friend and no stranger to these council chambers, an activist with the Writers Guild of America, a great writer and a great Angelino himself. Please welcome Stephen Paul Leiva.
Good morning, council members and Council President Garcetti. It is a pleasure for me to speak on behalf of my friend, but what is more important, humanities friend, Ray Bradbury. Ray Bradbury is a giant of literature and of life, uh, and it is completely appropriate for the City of Los Angeles to honor him not just with a day, but with a week, on the occasion of his 90th birthday this Sunday, August 22nd. For Ray Bradbury, from the day he started writing, has written every day of every week of every year. Every week of his working life, he has created and sent his creations: Fahrenheit 451, Martian Chronicles, Dandelion Wine, Something Wicked This Way Comes, among others. He has sent them out to the world to have an enormously positive effect on his millions of readers. Every week of his working life, Ray Bradbury has sent out love, and, uh, to the world, and I think you will all agree with me, that this world can use a little bit of love all it can get. So it is right and proper for the City of Los Angeles to pack up as much love as it can in a week and send it right back to Mr. Bradbury. President Garcetti mentioned some of the organizations, let me just reiterate, 'cause a number of organizations and people have come together to create events and projects to do just that, and they include the Writers Guild of America West, the Playboy Foundation, the Green School of Hollywood, the Central Library of our Los Angeles Public Library, one of the greatest library systems on earth, the great Paley Center for Media, UCLA, the Planetary Society, which has gathered over a thousand messages on a special birthday card for Ray, and eighteen animators who have created portraits of Ray or works of Ray, works of art inspired by Ray's life and literature. It is... they have all been gathered together as a special gift for Ray from his artistic children in film animation. I thank each of these organizations and all the individuals involved in each event for their time, their efforts, and most importantly, their passion and love for Ray Bradbury. And I thank this council and its members for this resolution, and especially Council President Eric Garcetti and his senior advisor Heather Rappening, who have been stalwart supporters of this effort from day one. And now I would like to bring to the podium two speakers to speak on behalf of Ray. First will be Cynthia Shore, the Executive Director of the Walt Whitman Birthplace Association, followed by Louis Friedman, the outgoing Executive Director and co-founder of the Planetary Society, and I thank you for your time.
Good morning, esteemed members of the Los Angeles City Council and President Mr. Garcetti. It's a pleasure to be here today and to see Ray once again. I met Ray a few months ago, coming out from Long Island. I'm the Executive Director of the Walt Whitman Birthplace, where Walt was born in 1819 in Huntington, Long Island, New York. The house was built by his father, and it's a state historic site on the National Register of Historic Places, and it's been named an American treasure by the Millennium Council. So I'm here representing the Walt Whitman Birthplace Association, I'm the Executive Director, and this is our second year that we're having a benefit for literacy. And at each benefit, we have decided to honor people who have an impact on literacy, and so, of course, it comes as no surprise that Ray Bradbury's name comes on... came up last year and this year to be honored. The award that I'm giving him today is a Champion of Literacy Award, and it's in the Literary Achiever category, and this is for an individual who enhances the impact of literacy through their body of work. They have gone beyond their craft and attained notable success in promoting and nurturing literacy. Well, of course, I don't have to say that, but in his own words, Ray has said, "There are worse crimes than burning books. One of them is not reading them." And we all know from his history that he's been a proponent of the city libraries, he went as a young child, which I'm sure many of us did also with our library cards, and this reading and literacy has equipped us, not only to learn about ourselves through stories, to learn about each other through stories, but to make the world a better place through stories, and certainly, Ray and his work has given us a vision of how to make the world a better place, and so that is one of the reasons we are honoring him. When I came out here a few months ago and I knocked on Ray's door, which was graciously open to me, he said to me, thinking he would catch me off guard, "Well, you know, I have a body of work called 'I Am the Body Electric,'" and that was, of course, one of Walt Whitman's poems. For that work, I might add, he received the National Book Award for Distinguished Contribution to American Letters, and this was way back in 1946, so he has a long history of awards and contributions. But I had a surprise in store for him. I asked him if he knew that he was a relative of Walt Whitman, and he is actually the sixth cousin, four times removed, to Walt Whitman. So had Walt Whitman had a great-great-grandson, Ray, you would have been the tenth cousin to that grandson of Walt Whitman's. So it's all good things come around. I'm very, very honored to be here, to come around from one of America's great poets, Walt Whitman, to one of America's great, greatest writers, Ray Bradbury, and offer him our Champion of Literacy Award for an individual achiever who has made such a significant contribution to the world of literacy. Thank you, Ray, we appreciate everything that you do. All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm Louis Friedman, I'm Executive Director of the Planetary Society, and I'm very honored to speak to the council members, to President Garcetti, and to, uh, and of course, to my good friend and old friend, Ray Bradbury. Ray has been an advisor to the Planetary Society since our founding, some thirty years ago, uh, when we were founded by Carl Sagan, Bruce Murray, and myself, and he's been a constant source of help and advice to us over those years. Most of all, uh, most people here are speaking about Ray's literary career, and of course, it's distinguished and should be the highlight of everything we do today, but I want to speak about something else, which is the influence he's had on science as a scientist. He wrote the most important statement that has inspired scientists in my life and among my colleagues for many years, "We are the Martians," and that has put very much, it has put all of us on Mars, Ray, it has put our team on Mars, it's put our team that we work with at JPL on Mars. You've influenced an enormous number of people to not only be on Mars, but to bring Mars to us. Uh, we had the honor, a couple of years ago, to actually put you on Mars, I don't know if you remember this, uh, but we have this, uh, little mini CD which includes works by Ray Bradbury, which is now up on Mars on the Phoenix spacecraft, uh, and, uh, and is, is, is part of bringing this world's literary tradition to another. So, uh, Ray, uh, you're going to inspire, you've inspired a lot of us in the field you've for many, many years, you've inspired, uh, all of Los Angeles, it's so appropriate that you are a Los Angeles resident, 'cause this is where the joy of exploration is really felt, uh, and you've inspired so many scientists, you're gonna inspire another generation and another world, uh, so we're looking forward. We have, uh, as part of this inspiration, we have some testimony here from more than fifteen hundred people around the world. Okay, uh, and, uh, including, uh, Bill Nye, who's the incoming, Bill Nye the Science Guy, who's the incoming Science Director, uh, and Executive Director for the Planetary Society, Jim Bell, the Society President, many other distinguished people, and thousands of ordinary people around the world from many countries who've, you've inspired, so thanks a lot, uh, and we look forward to seeing you on Mars again.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam President. Ray, you know, we all have to think of something unique and something special when we meet you. For a person in the middle of the night to think of a, a book and end up writing it and people enjoying it all over the earth, you are an incredible treasure to all of humanity, but I'm gonna do one up on you. You might have had turkey eggs in your life, this is the largest turkey egg ever laid, and it was laid by a bourbon hen yesterday at my hen's. So they've recalled three hundred and fifty million eggs because of Sennella, so you're gonna get five real eggs laid by real hens, and, uh, you know, you got the biggest turkey egg in the history of turkeys, so I'm gonna give them to you right now.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Mr. Caress.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Well, uh, Ray Bradbury means a lot to me in a number of ways, I don't even know if he'll, how well he'll be able to hear this, but, uh, in addition to being my constituent, and in addition to, uh, his daughter having been my classmate in junior high school and high school, um, I read my first collection of Ray Bradbury short stories forty-five years ago, and I've been reading and writing science fiction ever since. When I graduated from college, I actually intended to become a science fiction writer, completely and totally inspired by Ray Bradbury. Now, I kind of got sucked into my other hobby, politics and government, and I haven't written much in the last twenty-five years, I have to admit, um, but there's no one who's been such an inspiration to me, um, and, uh, other than in the political realm, made as much of a difference in my life as Ray Bradbury. And not only is he a great visionary in the things that, that he has written, but his words are magical, and if you, if you go back and read a story or a novel of his and just read it for the style, every sentence is a thing of beauty, um, like, like, there are very few writers that you can say that about. And for those of you who know him, almost everybody here has written, has read a lot of his science fiction, some of his later works, the main character is the city of Los Angeles, they're more mystery-oriented, um, and I think it would be a great thing for everyone on the council, everyone involved in city government, to read a couple of them that really, uh, give you a sense of, of every nook and cranny of, of the city of Los Angeles. Um, this is a very magical man, um, it's a great, not only is he a great treasure, but it's a great treat that he's lived as long as he has and has been able to share so much of, of his wonderful work with us. So, uh, I, I thank you, Eric, for bringing him here, and, uh, it's a great honor to participate in honoring someone who's been so remarkable and meant so much to me personally.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, Mr. Bradbury, I know we are celebrating your 90th birthday this year, and it was wonderful that you selected, uh, Clifton's Cafeteria on Broadway to celebrate your eighty-ninth birthday last year. Uh, the street and the downtown community was buzzing with excitement when you expressed your interest in working to revitalize our beautiful corridor on Broadway. Uh, we were told as well that a lot of your thinking and your ideas came from your time spent on Broadway in the nineteen thirties, and, uh, we're working to revitalize Broadway, and thank you for your interest. Those few words you mentioned about your interest on Broadway inspired more people to continue the work we're doing, so thank you for that, and thank you for all you've done for He and Kind, thank you so much.
Mr. LeBonds.
Thank you very much. Hey, Mr. Garcetti, this is a special day to bring someone as special as Ray Bradbury here, and I just wanna say, a graduate of Los Angeles High School, we're so proud that Los Angeles High School's LA Unified has probably one of the most renowned authors in the whole world from Olympic Boulevard and Rimpa. And as earlier mentioned by Mr. Caress, the fact that, uh, you have a, had, and Mr. Weezer, this city has meant so much to you that it's come through your brain to your finger as you write all your tales. Congratulations, I think we should sing "Happy Birthday," but I want you to leave. I don't have an egg for you, but I got a big, big hand for Ray Bradbury right here. All right, man. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonds.
And it's, uh, so great to see you at Muso Frank's in Sergio's section, and you come in there at night.
Mr. Garcetti.
Well, thank you, uh, now we would, Mr. Bradbury, we would love to hear, uh, your remarks, and Tom, maybe we'll sing it after that, but ladies and gentlemen, please again, welcome to council chambers, Ray Bradbury.
I suppose you wonder why I called you here today. My God, what a day this is. This is a cake walk. You know what you're doing to this old man? You're making me cry. It's really quite amazing. You know, I came to this town when I was fourteen years old. I hadn't begun to write yet, had a future ahead of me. I graduated from Brendan Junior High School, graduated from LA High, I sold newspapers at the corner of Olympic and Norton. I sold my first story when I was twenty-one years old. I've lived all around LA, I've lived at Pico and Western, I've lived on Venice Boulevard, and I lived downtown here on Temple Street many years ago. So I've written all about what I've seen in LA. I grew up in your libraries. I never went to college, I had no money to do that, so I went to all the libraries in LA and I read all the books, and I graduated from libraries when I was twenty-one years old. So I put all of LA in all of my books. If you open them, you'll find lots of LA in those books. And so I'm so pleased that you had me here today. So in the future, I hope to be part of your lives, and that I will see you all over the town and in the libraries in LA in the future. And the bottom line is here, how strange it must be for you to see before you this Martin, so having a Martin among you, isn't that incredible? So God bless you for this honor. I thank you, and I God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. On behalf of a very grateful city, we present to you this proclamation of Ray Bradbury Week in Los Angeles, enjoy. And let's sing him "Happy Birthday." Happy birthday to you. People love it. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ray. Happy birthday to you. We're so blessed to have you here.
God bless. No, you too. It's amazing, it's really amazing, we're gonna have celebration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and while we are making the transition to the next presentation, uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll and let's go through the, through the agenda very quickly.
Hello, Concardus, Hahn, Weezer, Caress, Kukorian, LeBonds, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, President Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present, and a quorum. Madam President.
And what's our first order of business?
Approval of the minute.
Uh, Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Zine seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Uh, Mr. Kukorian moves, Mr. Parks seconds.
Madam President, on the regular agenda, Items One through Eight are public hearings have been held, and Item One is a commissioner, do you wish to hold that?
Uh, we can hold that and then open the roll on the remaining items, please.
Madam President, and Item Two is actually an ordinance, do you wish to hold that for twelve members?
Yes, we'll hold that for twelve. Open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item.
Items Nine through Thirty-Eight are items which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration, and Item Nine is a commission reappointment, do you wish to hold that as well?
Yes, and are there any items with cards?
Yes, Madam President, there are cards on Items Eleven, Twenty-Six, Thirty-One, and Thirty-Four.
Okay, we will hear those and then, um, open the roll on the remaining items again. Close the roll, tabulate the vo... oh, sorry, Mr. Parks.
I'd like to call a special, we have an amended motion to get the, uh, proper account for those funds.
All right, um, thank you, Mr. Parks. Actually, we could take care of that right now, if that's just an amending motion?
Yes.
To put the proper account number in?
It's not been circulated.
Oh, it's not been circulated? Okay, great, well then we'll call Twenty-Seven special, and then open the roll on the remaining items, please. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Uh, next item.
Eleven ayes.
Madam President, that does take care of the items on the regular meeting.
Okay, I know we have to adjourn, and then go into the specials, so we will take Mr. Weezer. And his presentation will be next. All right, thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Yeah, it's right here, that's good. But thank you very much, Madam President, and from going from one of the greatest writers we have ever seen to one of the greatest comedians to come out of Los Angeles, we have with us the winner of the National NBC Last Comic Standing, we have with us Felipe Esparza. Let's give him a big round of applause. As many of you know, NBC has had a Last Comic Standing competition for the last few years, and this year, the city of Los Angeles, and particularly the community of Ball Heights where Felipe Esparza grew up, was excited to see one of their own competing for this title. Week after week, we would watch Monday nights on NBC, after comedian, after comedian would perform, and the nation would then vote for their favorite comedian to make it to the next round. I know I got on my Facebook and asked my friends to watch the show, to root for the hometown grown guy, and also, I said, just watch him yourself, and I don't even have to tell you who you should vote for, I'm sure you would vote for Felipe. But we're here honoring Felipe not only for winning the competition, but you see, Felipe is from Los Angeles, he grew up on the streets of Ball Heights, and if you listen to his material, it all evolves around his growing up here in the streets of Los Angeles, his life experience, and I've seen his shows before, I've been following you for a while, and I thought to myself, will America find this funny? And in fact, America voted for Felipe, and he is now the nation's Last Comic Standing. Let me tell you a little bit more about Felipe. He got immediate television exposure when he appeared on Showtime Diamonds in the Rough segment, just one and a half years into his stand-up career. Since then, he has appeared on numerous television shows, including ABC's Comics Unleashed, Comedy Central's Premium Blend, and Russell Simmons' Present Stand Up at the Alve, Showtime's Comics Without Borders, BET's Comic View, and Galavision's Que Locos. For those of you who are Spanish impaired, I mean, how crazy, get crazy? How crazy? In two thousand nine, he appeared in his two feature-length films, The Deported with Nick Tarturo, Thalia Shar, and Paul Rodriguez, and a feature-length film based on a stand-up comedy called I'm Not Like That No More, where he stars opposite Paul Rodriguez. And Felipe, you instilled a lot of pride in the Ball Heights community, you were a great representative for the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations, and we wanted to have you here today for being such a great representative of the city of Los Angeles, showing what LA is all about, and we wanted to present to you this resolution on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to congratulate you as being the two thousand ten Last Comic Standing, congratulations.
Yeah, it was tough growing up where I grew up. I grew up in a gated community, the windows were gated, the back door was gated. My mom, my dad used to walk around the whole neighborhood and collect old furniture, and bring it home and fix like my guy with duct tape. One time he brought a television home, I said, look, that TV had five hundred channels. When I got older, it didn't have five hundred channels, it was a knob from the oven. My favorite channel was three hundred degrees. We used to watch The Doofse Hazard on Channel Broil. We were poor growing up, one time the burglars broke into our house, and they couldn't find nothing to steal. So, they woke us up to make fun of us. The police made fun of us. They said, look around, they took everything here. Yeah, I grew up in the Pico Aliso housing projects, but I came out of that, I loved being a comedian, and keep laughing, it's the best feeling in the world, I love LA.
Mr. Alarcon.
This is my sister Marcia, Esparza Fernando, my mom, and my little niece Sarah Connors.
Mr. Alarcon.
Yeah, Felipe, I just, I just want to congratulate Felipe for winning the Best Comic in America, and I'll tell you, he performed with a friend of mine at The Odyssey in Mission Hills, Gil Esquivel, and this, this is one of the funny, I've seen him twice, I saw you in Wilmington too, but this guy is really funny, and I know some funny people, especially in politics, but, but I can tell you, Felipe is, is an absolute talent, I expect him to be the next George Lopez, because he is hilarious, and, and I just want to congratulate him. And Jose, thank you for honoring comedians, you know, it's really interesting, but when you think of the really good comedians, quite often they come out of tough neighborhoods, and they teach us how to laugh in the worst of times, and so, keep us laughing, we still have a few things to, to worry about. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Madam President, Felipe, you've made us proud, you've certainly made this homeboy proud, who grew up in Ball Heights along with you. Keep it going, and I am sure we're gonna see a whole lot more of you. Felicidades, gracias. Thank you.
Uh, number, Council District Five for the Make-A-Wish Foundation is our next presentation. Yeah, all right, we have thirteen members here, why don't, city, Mr. Clerk, which item do you want us to act on? It's an ordinance item, number?
It is item two.
All right, does anybody want to speak on this item, otherwise we're going to open the roll on it? Close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Thirteen ayes.
All right, thank you very much. Now we go back to Mr. Carras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been a very poignant day going from getting to have one of our great treasures of our city here in City Hall to be honored, to one of the organizations that's one of the great treasures of our city, the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Greater Los Angeles. On Wednesday, this chapter of Make-A-Wish Foundation enjoyed a remarkable landmark achievement, which was the presentation of its seven-thousandth wish come true since being founded in April of nineteen eighty-three. That wish was one of four hundred and twenty such, such wishes granted this year alone, that's an all-time record for a single year for the Greater Los Angeles chapter. And as I'm sure all you know, these wishes are granted to children with life-threatening medical conditions, and in doing so, the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Greater LA has provided magnificent experiences and joyful cherished memories for these young people, for their loving families, their communities, and indeed, all who make these wish fulfillments possible. So, it's with tremendous pleasure and gratitude that I have invited the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Greater Los Angeles to be here today, to be honored for all their compassionate and beneficial efforts. Before I make our special presentation, I'd like to introduce some great people who will share a few brief thoughts. First, Dr. Ramin Boshi, she is Vice President and CEO, CAO of Make-A-Wish Foundation of Greater Los Angeles, she's also the highest ranking MD of any of the sixty-five chapters.
Good morning. I'm honored to be here today. Thank you, Councilwoman Carras.
My pleasure.
And on behalf of everyone in the city of Los Angeles, who has had the opportunity to share in the power of a, of a wish, I humbly accept this amazing acknowledgement. We at the Make-A-Wish Foundation are blessed to bring a welcome distraction to a child who's battling a life-threatening medical condition, and as part of the largest wish-granting organization and charity in the world, we are honored to be recognized today for granting a wish for the, for the seven thousand child in Greater Los Angeles. In our twenty-seven years, we at the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Greater Los Angeles have accomplished granting seven thousand and counting wishes without the benefit of government funding, and by relying on our supporters in Los Angeles County, who give generously in dollars, service, and time. As we increase the number of children we serve, we need to increase that support and identify new donors to offset the costs, which now average about seven thousand five hundred dollars per wish. We at the foundation believe that children need to experience childhood as it is meant to be filled, with laughter and joy. We provide them the chance to use their imagination and complete the sentence that usually starts with, "I want to be," "I want to have," "I want to meet," or "I want to go." Then it is our job to make that magic happen. A heartfelt wish can be something simple, like a shopping spree, to something extraordinary, like our seven thousand wish and ultimate mermaid dream, which was presented on Wednesday to a young lady by the name of Claire, who is with us here today. We could not have done this without Kim Miles of HGTV, who brought her style, relationship, and time to this project. A wish can be powerful medicine for not only the child, but their family, who have seen their lives utterly turned upside down. I would like to introduce Adele, right here, Adele Bailey, whose seven-year-old son Brett got to live out his wish to be a naval aviator by traveling to go to the Top Gun Flight School in Nevada. Thank you again for capping our extraordinary week by declaring today the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Greater Los Angeles Day. Thank you.
And next, if we could have Adele talk about, a little bit about what this wish meant to her and her family.
Sure. My name is Adele Bailey, my son's name is Brett Bailey, and in late two thousand eight, he was diagnosed with radomyosarcoma, which is a very aggressive pediatric cancer. And during the subsequent year, which was last year, he spent at six years old, going through a year of, of weekly chemotherapy, six and a half weeks of daily radiation, several surgeries, six hospitalizations, very challenging. And when our medical team recommended us for a Make-A-Wish, it got us so excited, it gave us something to really think about, as opposed to the doctors, and the hospitals, and the meds, and his illness. Once we moved up on the Make-A-Wish list, things moved extremely quickly, we were really excited and really happy by what they did for us. My son's wishes, he had two wishes, he wanted to be either a race car driver, as in drive a race car, a NASCAR, or be a jet pilot, as in fly a jet. And actually, he wanted to be a train engineer, as in drive a train. And so, what happened, Make-A-Wish got together with the Navy, and within less than a month, they had put together a fabulous trip to the famous Top Gun school that was made famous by the Top Gun movie with Tom Cruise. And we got first-class treatment, VIP treatment, actually, he got VIP treatment, we were his entourage, up there carrying his bags. From the first day we got there, we came into the hotel room, it was loaded with gifts, we got so many, we had to send three boxes back home. He met the Admiral, we went in for a meet and greet, and ended up staying forty-five minutes with him as he talked to my son about what it takes to become a Navy pilot. We also met all of the Top Gun pilots, who are the best of the best in the Navy, and they took him in, and they took pictures, and we went out on the flight line, there's a, oh, there we go, a picture of him in a real Navy helicopter, we went in all the jets, and then he was allowed to fly their simulator, and his mission was bombing San Francisco. So, he was flying at five Gs on their simulator with all the Top Gun pilots going, "Go, Brett, go!" And he's crashing and barrel rolling over San Francisco. He also had the opportunity to be an air traffic controller, he really did give directions to the pilots. We were treated as absolute VIPs with a level of compassion and interest and generosity that was just amazing. I'm very thankful to the Make-A-Wish Foundation for making that happen, for my son and for our family, it was a once-in-a-lifetime experience that we'll be grateful for, and I feel very honored to be able to speak here today to you on their behalf. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Claire Weinland, who is here with her mother Melissa Nordquist, and grandparents Bobby and John Miller. On Wednesday, Claire was the seven-thousandth recipient of a wish presented by the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and would you like to tell us anything about what it was like? We'll get you a handheld mic, hold on one sec.
My name is Claire, and I am one of the many grateful and thankful Make-A-Wish children. I recently went through a pretty tough time in my illness, and right away, Make-A-Wish, Make-A-Wish came over to the hospital room, and they were loving and compassionate, and even though I'd never met any of them before, they really treated me like they knew what I had been through, you know, and they knew how, how it felt. And it was really an amazing experience, and, and, you know, they're, it's a really great, it's a really great company, really great, not sure what to call it, but yeah, it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Claire, and of course, Claire was the seven thousand recipient of a wish, but it was a total coincidence and complete surprise to us when we also looked into who the seven thousand and first recipient was, and that is three-year-old Matthew Palacios, who is the son of a fine gentleman who works right here in Los Angeles City Hall for Councilmember Bernard Parks. Tomorrow, their family are taking young Matthew on a trip, an exciting trip, thanks to this Make-A-Wish chapter, and perhaps Andrew would like to say something about this.
Turn around and say, "Thank you, Make-A-Wish."
Thank you, Make-A-Wish.
For sending me to Disney World.
Thank you, sending me to Disney World.
Thank you all for having us here, we're very grateful as a family to be blessed. Make-A-Wish has been a true blessing, we want to thank Crystal Green for being part of everything for Matthew, and also for Councilmember Parks for being very supportive for my husband's flexibility to, for my son's appointments and everything that we've been through, and we're honored to be able to have this, you know, just going on a trip to Disney World, who could ever imagine, just the impact of having a child, the emotional and the financial struggles, we are extremely very grateful, and thank you, Make-A-Wish, for making Matthew's wish come true.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to thank Make-A-Wish for giving Matthew his wish, and also want to tell Raquel and Andrew, whatever we can do to support you, you're going through some tough times, and we never want to forget about Andrew the second over there. And we never want to forget about Andrew II over there that's actually in charge of the whole operation. So we want to make sure we acknowledge him because he has been the big brother in the long hours that his dad puts in. He's also periodically the father of the house. So we want to just say congratulations to Make-A-Wish and thank you for what you're doing for this family and the support you're giving them.
Thank you, Make-A-Wish, for sending us to Florida.
I just want to thank everybody as well. Councilmember Corretts, Councilmember Parks, Make-A-Wish. And I'm gonna keep it brief because you don't want to see me cry. Boogers everywhere and everything. So thank you, everybody, Make-A-Wish. And again, it was a really honor and we're really blessed to be able to do this with GoToFlorida. It's a once-in-a-lifetime thing for us. And we're really, really blessed. Thank you.
And now, it's my great pleasure to present this proclamation to the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Los Angeles, and its staff, and donors, and more than 450 volunteers. And they're all thanked for their tremendous generosity of spirit and their great work. Thank you, Mr. Corretts and Mr. Lavange.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts, for bringing all of you here to Make-A-Wish. Whoever thought of Make-A-Wish, that first person who thought of it really thought of a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is from Council District 14, Mr. Weezer. He'll be followed after his presentation by Councilmember Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I have with us here today a remarkable apparel line that is based in Spain and is expanding in the city of Los Angeles to bring jobs and to provide for the economic activity that we have in the city of Los Angeles. I have with us today the apparel line Toes. And in Spain, Toes is a casual jewelry company. It is a household name, as well known as The Gap and Tiffany's here in the United States. And the Toes family founded the company in 1920, just after World War I. It is still a family-owned and operated company with Mrs. and Mr. Toes at the helm and their four daughters in supporting roles. It's a national success story. About 20 years ago, the company really made its first major mark when Rosa Oriol de Toes designed the company's trademark charm, a little stylized bear, which quickly became a status symbol in Spain and in every other Spanish-speaking country in the world. With more than 400 shops in 42 countries, including one here in Los Angeles at the Beverly Center in Mr. Corretts's district, and over 50 in California alone, they have plans to expand. And so with that, I wanted to recognize Toes for their success, for their intent on expanding in California and in the city of Los Angeles. We welcome the Toes family. And having JD Mitchell and pop icon Kylie Minogue as the ambassadors certainly will help. So I wanted to present to Toes a city resolution congratulating you on the success story and to welcome you to the city of Los Angeles and much more success. Congratulations.
Okay, my English is not very good. I just come from Barcelona because they told me that was going to happen, something really special in Los Angeles for us. And I am really excited about that. Okay, first of all, thank you to all the City Hall of Los Angeles. Thank you to Mr. Weezer for allowing us to be a part of this celebration today. And after seeing the whole people that has been honored, I think it's most honor for us being here. Los Angeles for me is very special because I was studying here like 20 years ago, when the GIA was still here in Santa Monica. I'm a gemologist. And this is why also personally, it's more exciting for me being here today. As he told, we are a family business company. We are in more than 42 countries. We mainly work with jewelry and also bags and some, let's say, fashion accessories. And our main goal is making it here in this marvelous country. I guess my parents could be here today, but his agenda, their agenda is like crazy. But I'm really, really honored and very, very happy to be here. These kind of things make us believe that the work that we do, it really gives us the strength to continue. And because our company is not also a matter of work, but also about illusion, we really work with a lot of illusion and strength. And because also we sell illusion. It's not only a piece of jewelry. It's not only a piece of leather. It's that any customer that comes to our store, they really felt that they are getting something really, really special. And this is why we want to be recognized as. And also all the people that work with us. We are a very huge family company. And this is how we want to be in the future. So I don't know. Maybe if I was talking in Spanish, it would be more easy for me. I'm gonna have to say, "Muchisimas gracias. Figo de Los Angeles, estoy emocionada. Y en nombre of my family, myself, and all the Toes company, thank you, thank you, thank you very much."
Thank you. Mr. Lavange.
Mr. Weezer, Rosa, welcome to your family. In 1781, the King of Spain granted the deed for the Publlo de Los Angeles. So people from Spain are very special in Los Angeles for its history all the way. So we certainly welcome you. You see the flag of Spain up there.
Actually, there's four flags. I think three of the four are Spanish flags. Two of them are naval flags there. And then we got the royal flag over there.
Yeah.
A special welcome. And I hope Mr. Weezer or his deputy take you to the top of City Hall. Because if it's very clear, and you get on your tippy-toes, and you're lucky, you can see Barcelona.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias, felicidades.
Thank you. Again, welcome to Los Angeles. And the city of Los Angeles welcomes you and your continued activity here and your support for the city. And much congratulations to your worldwide success so far. Congratulations. Yeah, thank you, Parks.
Thank you. Mr. Parks is our next presenter from Council District 8.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, we're here to honor some of our local students for a competition that they were involved in in the 8th District. I'm joined here by Maynard Brown, who's director of this program at Crenshaw High School, Dwayne Weisenhaus, Amani Brown, Michael Donovan, Ray Hodges, and Starlet Quarles. And those are the people that have helped organize this event. Basically, what we are honoring these Crenshaw students for is that they achieved the overall best presentation within the 2010 Urban Land Institute Urban Plan Competition. During the competition, the Crenshaw High School team worked as one cohesive team to analyze and respond to a hypothetical request for proposal for the redevelopment of Marlton Square, located in the heart of the 8th District. As other high school teams competed to secure the winning bid for the fictitious city council made up of urban planning volunteers, this team came in first overall. During the annual award ceremony, the winning team is announced and presented with scholarships towards their college education. This year's winner are Avington Arnold, who is going to Cal State Long Beach; Geneva Mendez, going to UC San Diego; Stephanie Lopez, going to Cal State LA; and Brittany Hodges, who's going to UC Davis. And we wanted to present them each with a certificate to go along with their scholarship and give them a round of applause. We'd also like to ask Mr. Maynard Brown to come up and explain in more detail about this program and the exercise that these students went through. Thank you, Councilmember Parks. And I cannot understate the support that we got from Councilmember Parks's office, who was instrumental in bringing a number of players to the table for these young people. And so thank you again, Councilmember Parks. The Business Management and Entrepreneurship Academy is an academy that focuses on real-world applications of theories and concepts that these young people learn in the classroom. We accomplish that, and I might add that it fundamentally changes the way in which education is delivered in the classroom to these young people. And that's important to note, given the crisis that we all are seeing in the classroom in our communities all across this country. But we accomplish this through public-private partnerships with organizations such as the Urban Land Institute, otherwise known as ULI, which is one of the largest planning and land use planning organizations in the country with offices worldwide. And that came here locally under the leadership of Ms. Starlet Quarles and Mr. Michael Donovan, who have an initiative here that is quite creative in bringing those concepts and theories through application to these young people in understanding how to plan a community and utilize land in their community. So without hesitation, I'd like to introduce Ms. Quarles and Mr. Donovan, who will then turn it over to their coach and these young people. We want you to hear from these young people. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Starlet Quarles. And I'm the current chair of the Urban Plan Program. I'd like to thank Councilmember Parks for inviting us. And this is my co-chair and incoming new chair for Urban Plan for the 2011 year, Michael Donovan. And we're just very excited that Crenshaw was able to be honored this year. They've worked very hard. They were divided into five. A CEO, their financial planner, the marketing director, the site planner, and the, who was the more?
Developer.
And the developer, obviously. And the kids mobilized to be able to create a highest and best use for Marlton Square. They worked very hard. They presented a 3D model as well as a PowerPoint presentation. And the goal of the Urban Plan Program is to teach high school students the fundamentals of real estate development and urban planning and to expose them to other careers other than athletes or entertainment, but to know that they can have an impact in their community through their voice in the community development and construction or architecture fields. So we're very proud of our Crenshaw students. And we're very excited about the incoming 2011 year. And I'm gonna have Michael Donovan, the incoming chair for the 2011 year, introduce our Crenshaw High School students. Thank you.
Thank you, Starr. I think the wonderful thing about this program is it truly brings professionals, myself, architects, developers, and constructing people out into the classrooms where they can really make a difference in people's lives. This program has a citywide reach, where we're involved with about 12 different schools. Currently, we have up to 30 or 40 teams, participate over 300 students. They compete in teams of five to seven students. And it's wonderful when a school such as Crenshaw really steps up and makes a big difference. And part of that is truly the volunteers. There's over 72 volunteers. And committee that came together gave up their time to volunteer and to make a difference. And one of those people that really needs to be recognized is the team leader for Crenshaw, architect Dwayne Weisenhaus.
First, I want to thank Councilmember Parks and City Council. And I want to thank the Urban Land Institute for this terrific program that teaches the high school students what the real world is all about. And I want to thank Maynard Brown. I remember a few weeks, maybe one week before, our project was due. The kids spent so much time on the project, but they didn't have a model ready. They didn't have their plans ready. They didn't have the report ready. And I said, "Guys, this is the real world. This is about deadlines. This is about working as a team." And the team really pulled it off. I was so impressed. And I'm very proud of the students for having done what they worked. They would have been winners whether or not they won first place. But the fact that they've won showed that, yes, it takes hard work and determination. But I think that these students have done a remarkable job. And they are gonna do very well in their future. So let me introduce the students one at a time. First, I'd like to introduce the, what was our team? We called it the Crenshaw Development Corporation. And we had our CEO, Brittany Hodges.
Hello, I'm Brittany Hodges. We kind of got mixed up earlier. I'm going to Cal State Long Beach, and Avington is going to UC Davis, but it's okay. I just want to say thank you on behalf of me and our team that we just want to say we are grateful for the recognition. And it wasn't the hard work and dedication of our team that made us get this far. So just to say thank you.
Now, as CEO, Brittany has really showed the tremendous leadership skills she has. And now I'd like to introduce Avington Arnold. He was our director of marketing. And he has shown his terrific business skills and marketing.
Everyone, my name is Avington. This project was fun. I had a lot of fun doing it. And I'm going to UC Davis in the fall. And I'm an activist with the Sierra Club. Thanks.
And now I'd like to introduce the team's director of architecture. And that would be Henoveva Mendez. And Henoveva has shown her talents as a designer, as a planner. And she's going to school as an engineer and architect. So here is Henoveva.
Good morning. Well, my name is Henoveva Mendez. And this fall, we'll be attending UC San Diego. As Dwayne mentioned, this project really made me realize how this... Okay. How this, what's the word? How this... This industry works. At first, I never really realized what it took to be an architect. But when Mr. Brown introduced me to Dwayne, I really noticed that this was my passion. And I feel fortunate that I had to be, I was introduced to this project because I had to experience what it takes to be an architect. And now that I've been in this project, I realize that that's what I want to be in the future. And yes, I really appreciate this.
And finally, I'd like to introduce our director of community relations. This is Stephanie Lopez. And she was in charge of making sure that our project interfaced with the community and knowing how important it is to get the community on the side of any major project to make it a success. Stephanie?
Hello. It was really an honor to be a part of the project. It really was fun. It was a new experience. And, well, yeah, I learned a lot, pretty much. I learned how to be open and to communicate with the world and stuff like communities. Before, I was kind of like really, really, really shy. But now, I guess, I'm kind of open up more. And the project helped kind of that a little bit of it. But yeah. And I'm going to Cal State LA to be a psychologist, psychiatrist, maybe. And yeah, it was just an experience. It was a beautiful experience.
Thank you very much. So colleagues, this is the 2010 winners. And we'd like to give all of them an applause. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We're gonna go back to the back position.
Appreciate it. The audience, please.
Sir, introduction, sorry?
Introduction.
Yeah, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask the participants in the Chicano Latino Youth Leadership Project to please stand up. If you're still here, I think you're way in the back. These are some young people who are taking a tour of City Hall today, and they're learning the intricacies of government, and they are the emerging leaders in the state of California. Welcome to City Hall, and I want to thank Norma Fernandez, Ulises Sanchez, for bringing here today. Congratulations. Please take advantage of your experience, and have a wonderful, wonderful day here at City Hall. Welcome.
Thank you. A couple items before our public comment that we take by custom are commissioners. Mr. Chick, if you'd like to come on forward, we'd love to have you come forward for item number one. Colleagues, this is the reappointment of Robert Chick to the Lasers Board. Want to thank you for your service and give you the opportunity to say any opening remarks about your renomination. And just pull that microphone a little close to you, we'll be sure to hear you, but nice to see you.
Nice to see everybody again.
Anything you'd like to say at the outset?
Well, it's, it's good to be back here in front of the council. It's been five years since my last confirmation, which was the Library Commission. I'm looking forward to this new challenge, which is indeed a challenge. Many of the people in this room are dependent at some point in their life in the viability and the success of the Los Angeles City Retirement System. So, it's an important item for everybody here. So, I'm, I'm trying to get up to speed, I'm, I'm learning as much as I can, and I promise everybody here that I'll do the best job I possibly can. And I'm open to questions that anyone might have.
All right, well, Mr. Zine is the first on the queue. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good seeing you again, Bob. I know you've served on the Library Commission. Any other commissions?
Well, I, I first started on what was Public Utilities and Transportation, which did taxi cabs and, and cable, as well as transportation. Then I went to Transportation, then I went to the Airport Commission, and finally, to the Library Commission.
How many mayors have you served under?
I've served under, I don't know, three mayors.
So, you obviously know how to get the job done.
Well, I, I know the city of Los Angeles, so try to get the job done.
In spite of the political challenges, you've done well with that. I just want to show you my support. I've known you for a long time, and you're always there, done very well with those commissions. And the one you're venturing into, obviously, has some serious issues with the revenues, the contributions from the employees, and the dollars and the investments, and how they haven't done as well as they have in the past, so it'll be challenging. The library's been challenging also with the revenue drop, but I know you do well in it, so I just want to give you my voice of support and encouragement.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome.
Good to see you again, too.
It's been a long time we've known each other, and you've gotten gray, and I've gotten bald, but we're still kicking, and we're still doing our thing, which is a real pleasure to have you stepping up to the plate. It's probably the most contentious, most difficult time to be on one of those boards, because we're trying to do more with less, and we're on the verge of impacting services beyond what a taxpayer will be able to tolerate. People pay good taxes, but pensions and health care and retirement and all the things that are sacred to our employees are now on the table due to the reality of the economy we're in. And we saw the stats yesterday. We're another half a million Americans went on the unemployment lines. We are not in the great shape we were three years ago. Better yet, who knows what we're looking at tomorrow? That's the truth. You're a businessman, you're, you understand politics, you know how to work through landmines and, and get things done. That's one of your greatest talents, is your ability to get things done. How do you view the present state of affairs? Any comments about health care? Any comments about pensions? Any comments about the budget in general? And where we, as a city, should be going from here?
Well, first of all, everyone here, all of you, know more than I do about this problem. You've had a presentation, I think, last week, or relating to the pension systems. We are in very difficult times. There cannot be any insurance that we're going to see great positive returns on, on equities and investments. The cost to the city, the budget cost has been going, the retirement costs have been going up. As a result, the city is forced to reduce services. The question is, where are we going to go, and what kind of reform will take place? It's definitely gonna have to take place. I'm just new in this job, and new at learning about it, but I know that there's going to have to be some changes in the future. We have many wonderful retired people who we're committed to, people, whether it be myself, who's a part of a pension system and on Social Security. We depend upon the promises that were made to us, so it's gonna be a challenge to see that those promises are kept. I, I think it can be done, otherwise, I wouldn't have volunteered for, for this service, so that's...
Well, you're well-equipped for it, and we thank you for stepping to the plate.
Thank you.
Mr. Laban?
I just want to say Bob Chick is a great Angelino. He's a great citizen of the 4th District still, right? And he's contributed greatly to many administrations here, and I just want to thank you and call for an i-vote, unless you want me to vote the other way.
Well, I just wanted to say that last time I was here, you asked, for the Library Commission, you asked me what my favorite, my favorite book was. Please don't ask me what my favorite stock is.
Got it, I won't do that, that's right, exactly.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Good morning, Mr. Chick. Good morning. Thank you for being here. One of the things, we all know you for a number of years, why don't you give the community an understanding of your level of commitment to the commission process? Where have you served in the past? What, what positions have you held over what period of time?
Well, on the commission side, I first was appointed by Mayor Bradley in 1977 to Public Utilities Commission, with, one year was, became part of a consolidation, and I served for that as president of the Transportation Commission for a period of nine years. Then was appointed by Mayor Bradley to the Airport Commission, where I served for about eight years as president for about three or four of those years. And most recently, I've been a Library Commissioner, which has been one of the, the great joys of my life, because our libraries are a gem of our Los Angeles City Government. During that period, we built 32 or 33 new libraries and remodels, so it was a great period for the, for the library's system. In my, in my career, what I earned, my living, so I could do all the volunteer work, I've been in the institutional side of the insurance business, life insurance, and for the last 30-plus years as Chief Executive Officer and now Chairman of the Board of a Casualty Insurance Company. So, where I've had the exposure to deal with, with pension fund issues, our own, creating a, in my own company, a defined benefit pension plan. I've worked with actuaries both on the, on all sides of the business, so I believe I have the experience to, to sit on this board.
Okay. Let me ask you, you gave us your view of the dual role that you play on the board, one, being responsible for the fiduciary interest of those that are paying into the system, but you also commented on what your overall issues in the sense of what your responsibility for the overall city's financial health, and maybe you can comment on that?
Well, as I read the, the role of Commissioner slash trustee of, of this Lasers organization, the primary responsibility is to the retirees as a fiduciary, but you also has, has, have as a responsibility, a, a commitment to, to the city, to see that this can be done in an effective and, and financially sound basis. So, in a sense, there's going to have to be a great deal of looking into, from the city's standpoint, how we achieve these goals. Pension funds are forever. They aren't, you can't look at them on a daily basis, but you have to look at them from a naturally sound basis, and the job is for the city with this particular board to work to make certain that people get their pensions and retirements.
And colleagues, also, I think what's important is, although Mr. Chick has talked about his long service in three or four different commissions, you have almost a near-perfect record of attendance, which I think shows that you've taken that responsibility very, very serious, and certainly, we appreciate that. And again, you may want to comment on that, because it's clear that you have an interest and also, you've had a dedication.
I, I haven't kept count of how many commission meetings I've, I've attended, but I do think it's important, if you make a commitment to attend, to be part of the commission system, which I think is a, a very positive part of Los Angeles City Government, if you make that commitment, you have to make the commitment to attend meetings and to participate and know what you're talking about. And I've tried to do that over the nearly 25 years that I've been a, a city commissioner.
Okay. Thank you very much. Colleagues, I would recommend strongly that we continue the long-term commitment that Mr. Chick has had to this city by appointing him to the Lasers Board.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and thank you, everybody, and Mr. Chick, for your great service. We appreciate you. There's a very important moment to be serving on Lasers for all sorts of reasons, so we will be looking forward to your steady hand there. Let's go ahead and open the roll on this nomination. Madam Clerk, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And we've kept your streak alive. You're confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
And we have one other Commissioner, item...
That is item nine. And that is the reappointment of Ms. Rochelle Mills to the South LA Area Planning Commission.
I recognize Mr. Weisar, Vice Chair of our Plumb Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ms. Mills, thank you for your continued service. This is a reappointment to the South Area Planning Commission, and you have an extensive experience in planning and architectural issues. You are a native of Los Angeles, having gone to Crenshaw High School. I'm saying that because Mr. Laban here will save, will save us a question and find out where you went to high school. You also have, went to Washington University School of Architecture, and we certainly appreciate your service. The Planning Department, as well as Mr. Reyes, have expressed their strong interest in this reappointment. If you could just tell the council about what you've found in your last few years of service, what you've found to be most challenging, and what you hope to accomplish when you are reappointed.
What's probably the most challenging for the South LA Area Planning Commission is the lack of, not meaning any disrespect, but the lack of needy planning cases that come before us. And why it's a challenge is because we don't get the turnout, the public turnout that we'd like to get. What I am very excited about, however, is recently, there's a lot of development going on in South Los Angeles, and it has certainly energized the planning commissioners, and I am confident that the public will also come out and support those things as well.
Great, thank you very much. Well, we look forward to your continued service, and colleagues, I urge your, your support for Ms. Mills. She has certainly exhibited a strong interest and involvement in her commission, and I think the city will be well-served by her reappointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no other speakers on the queue. We'll open the roll on your renomination, and thank you for your service as well. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Excuse me, thirteen ayes.
Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Here for our Commissioner. We have a request from, and we'll go to public comment after two other items. Mr. Laban, we want to take 11 and 13. I mean, we think we have to reconsider 13, but let's go ahead and take up 11 first in the meantime. Thank you. And I'll recognize Mr. Laban, or Mr., sorry, the Chair of the Committee.
Yeah, I want to recognize Councilmember Paul Kocorian. Mr. Kocorian worked very hard and diligently in working this issue, which is so important to so many people, is the community name identifications. And I gotta ask the gentleman if he could sit down, because the sergeant wants a little bit of order there, if it's okay. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Kocorian if he could give just an intro, because you worked so hard on this issue, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laban. Mr. President, this matter came before the Education and Neighborhoods Committee, and when it initially came before us, there was some degree of disagreement about where the boundaries of the communities of Little Bangladesh and Koreatown should lie. We encourage the communities to continue to work together, and with Councilmember Laban's great leadership, as well as President Garcetti and Mr. Weston and others who came and worked with the community, they went out and gathered tremendous degree of public input, they did a tremendous amount of bridge-building among these committees, and the Korean community, and the Central American community, and the Bengali community, all came together and really worked this through in a very, very positive way, which I believe will have a lasting impact on developing a very strong relationship among these communities, well beyond the limitations of this particular issue. So, long after these neighborhoods are officially recognized, as a result of the process that we went through to get here, I believe these communities will have a very, very strong working relationship on many, many issues for many years to come. So, it was a very, very positive day in the Education and Neighborhoods Committee, and I hope that it will be here in this council as well, and I would just urge your i-vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laban.
Thank you very much, and I thank Mr. Weston and yourself, Mr. Garcetti, for your help here. As you know, this is in the greater Wilshire Center area. In every areas of the city, often, there's a sub-area, if we could call it that, and Little Bangladesh is the, is a great, great triumph for those over 15,000 to 20,000 people who live in that area to have a little piece of home in their own neighborhoods in Los Angeles. And we're gonna have two speakers, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, if I could ask?
Absolutely.
Ask Mohammed, if you would like to speak first? We'll announce your name at the podium.
And then after that will be Mohammed Shamim Husein.
And if I could, because you want to know the excitement of all these folks, for all those who are for this, please rise right now. Rise. All right, good job. All right, good job.
Good morning, Honorable President and Councilmembers. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our proposal of Little Bangladesh. I should mention here that the Education Neighborhood Committee has recommended this proposal and forwarded to you for your kind approval. We, the members of Bangladesh community here at the Los Angeles, need your wholehearted cooperation regarding the approval of our proposal of Little Bangladesh. I thank very sincerely Councilman Tom Robson for helping us always throughout the naming process of Bangladesh, Little Bangladesh. Bangladesh is around 15,000 miles away from the greatest city of Los Angeles. There are almost 46,500 Bangladeshi Americans that live in the Los Angeles city, among those most concentration in the Koreatown, Ushar district, around third district. Our cultural centers, grocery store, restaurants, business, place of worship, and language education school, all are located in this area. This is also a common hangout place of our people. The naming is extremely important for our community that would given us the honor of identity in this wonderful city. I ask again the Honorable Chair and the Committee to please grant the naming of Little Bangladesh in, in the designated area as agreed with other communities. Therefore, we hope the Little Bangladesh sign will be posted on third district very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Honorable President Eric Garcetti, Honorable Tom Robson, and all other distinguished council members and their associates. Please take our sincere gratitude and thanks for all the kind efforts that all of you have made. Honorable President Eric Garcetti, Honorable Tom Lavon, and all other distinguished council members and their associates. Please take our sincere gratitude and thanks for all the kind efforts that all of you have made to make Little Bangladesh possible and into a reality. I would just like to say that today is a very important day for all the Bangladeshis living in Los Angeles. After working so hard for about 18 months with Korean community, Latino community, and Mr. Tom Lavon and his staff. Today is a really, really important day for us. Indeed, it is a great day for all of us living in Los Angeles to have section of the city designated Little Bangladesh. But for us Bangladeshis, this section given to us will finally allow us to have other individuals and countries recognize our beautiful country of Bangladesh. This will also allow us to introduce our culture to the city and to our current and future Bangladeshi American generations that, like any other first and second generation, have lost touch with their roots as they grow up in America. Little Bangladesh is not just a sign, but it is a symbol and representation of our country becoming part of the great city of Los Angeles. Little Bangladesh will inspire us to contribute to the ethnic diversity of the city. Thank you for, again, for your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, because the north side of what would be Little Bangladesh is in the 13th district, and your staff's help and your direction certainly worked this issue well, as well as the 4th district side. This is on Third Street between New Hampshire and Alexandria. So, if there's no other speakers on the queue, Mr. President?
Thank you. Shagatom and Salaam alaikum. Thank you, guys, for all coming, and Don Obad, for all of your great work. With that, let's go ahead and take a vote and create... It's amazing what you can learn through the internet. I just want to say how proud we are as a city today, both for the Korean community and the Bangladeshi community. I haven't had the good fortune of going to Bangladesh yet, but my parents went there many years ago and speak of it all the time to me, so it is on my list of places to go. And I know that maybe in the future, with Mr. Labanche, we can find a sister-city relationship in Bangladesh with Los Angeles. And we thank you for your activism and the great work. And let's go ahead and make this official today. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
It is approved. Thank you. Thank you very much. And let's reconsider item 13, please. Please open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And now we have item 13. For our Bangladeshi friends, we now have the Korean community in Grace U, if you'd like to come forward. And representatives of the Korean community would like to come forward to say a few words as well. I think it will shock people to know that we're making something official that everybody has assumed has been official for many years. So, it's good to make history right here today doubly so. Welcome.
Kumari, Mr. President, Garcetti, honorable council members. And I want to give special thanks to Education and Neighborhoods Committee Chair, Mr. Kocorian, Mr. Labanche, and Mr. Westen. It was your leadership that we were able to spearhead this project and see it to the end. It was a long process, we had some challenges along the way, but at the end, we learned to embrace each other. Now, we're all one big happy family. This is a defining moment. It is a historical day for our community, as well as for Bangladesh community, and for all communities in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Good morning, President Garcetti and council members. It's a pleasure to join you this morning to say how grateful the Korean-American community is to have officially on the books a Koreatown boundary. So, thank you, everyone, for allowing us the time to work with our neighbors to get this accomplished. We did this for close to 18 months, working with various ethnic communities within the Koreatown, because as you know, although the community is ripe with all sorts of signs in Korean, some of the residents, or the vast majority of the residents, are non-Korean speakers. So, we understand how special and what a privilege it is to have a Koreatown boundary, and thank you again for making it official.
Good morning, Mr. President, and Councilmember Tom Lavon, and Chairman Kocorian for your hard work, and also Councilmember Herb Westen and Councilmember Ed Reyes for taking care of the Koreatown with a good leadership. It's been a historical moment, and today is a very historical day for Koreatown. And thanks to all the community members before us that have done a great job with the Koreatown. And well, I ensure you that, you know, our Korean community members will make sure that that's going to be a great place to live and a great place to do business and a great place for education. And, you know, we're going to do our best to keep the Koreatown out of crimes and all the bad things in the Koreatown. And I thank you for city and all the great leadership and giving us a chance to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Han?
Thank you. I just wanted to rise and say, I always thought it was official, but it's great to hear how much work you've done, bringing people together, and that's what's important, that's what makes Los Angeles great. We just celebrated the 65th anniversary of the liberation of Korea down in San Pedro last Sunday at the Korean Bell. And so, two sides of the city, really, and everything in between, are a testament to the great friendships and relationships we have with the Korean-Americans. So, this is a great day. Congratulations to all that made it possible. Come, Sam and Don.
Thank you, Mr. Labanche.
Just a little history. Back then, then Mayor Bradley, then John Forough, both six foot five, six foot four, just went out to Olympic Boulevard, and they didn't call and ask permission, they just put the sign up where they knew it should be. And now, unfortunately, or fortunately, or whatever you want to say, there's certain prospects that you have to do. And a great work by the Korean-American community, great work by Herb Westen and his staff. Give them a big hand, because they were extremely helpful. And the only wonderful, beautiful thing is, all of this comes together in a great neighborhood of Los Angeles. So, very special, all the Korean leaders. I got one quick story, though. When we had this little discussion between Little Bangladesh and Koreatown, I said I needed just five leaders from the Korean community and five from the Bangladesh community to meet me at Third and Vermont, and we walked the neighborhood, check it out, store by store. Well, right on time, Korean-American community showed up, five people. And we shook all their hands, turned around, there's the Bangladeshis, 35 people. Because they were so excited. But we all worked together, and it was a great part of LA history. This is what the city's all about, a city of great neighborhoods, and this was to make our strongest city. I truly want to thank Mr. Westen and his staff, and Ms. Han, because the Korean Friendship Bell and all the ships from Korea come through your district, and Paul Kocorian for the great committee work. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. And with that, it is time for us to take a vote as well. So, please, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. We'll now go to our general public comment, then we'll come back for item 34, which I know a lot of people are here for. General public comment, as for items not on the agenda but under our jurisdiction. Sonia Dunson is our first speaker. I know we have a few folks that are going to just clear through, so Ms. Dunson, hold on one second, we'll make sure we get you to the podium, and we will hear your comments. How you doing, brother? Only, one does only in LA things. You know where this happens? Only in Los Angeles would it be. You good?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get, absolutely. Have a good time. All right, see you. Thank you. Go ahead, we have our first speaker. I'm sorry, Ms. Dunson, come on forward. If you'd like to address the council, my apologies. Next will be Sean Simons after that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and to council members. I was here about three weeks ago, and I spoke in support of Councilman Alakorn. I was one of the victims in the fire, for the Sari Fire, November, the mid-part of November 2008. And it was such a tragedy. But what Councilman Alakorn did for us, it made it so much better. And I have noticed that certain politicians, they've had witch hunts to come out after them. I noticed with Charles Rangel in New York, and then Maxine Waters here, right in California, and even our own councilman. And I would just like to say, this could happen to any one of you. And I would like to plead to the students, the young people in the 7th district and all over. If your councilman or politician or representative is in a witch hunt, you write those letters, send those letters to the newspaper. Do not allow this to happen. And you can give your support for Alakorn, for Maxine Waters, for any one of the people that they are doing a witch hunt on. And I notice all of these people, that this witch hunt is going on, they have been outspoken, they have done things for our community, and they have made a difference. When you kids go back to school on the 13th, and some of you are still there, you tell your principals, you tell your teachers, you want to write letters in support of your councilman, even your mayor, when they said he had tickets. Please do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean Simons. So, our next speaker, after that is Arnold Sachs.
I'm sure we've all been privy to some very bizarre public comments, where the speaker shakes his fist and spits, waves their hand, and levels crazy accusations. Well, I've come to understand the crazies, because I've learned how easy it would be to become one. And I don't believe they were always so. I believe they once came to council with real problems, thoughtful issues, and even some decent solutions. But they were met by this council and the council before with a general disregard for their time, with a constant moving target of public comment period, and a disrespect for their civic engagement. They were met by a half-empty horseshoe while their members wandered and schmoozed, twittered, tweeted, whispered, and even snoozed. I ask that each member of this council sign a pledge to sit down and shut up and listen during public comment. To take in regard that many of us took off work, altered schedules, arranged childcare, took hot buses across the city, or are paying a fortune for parking, all to come and express to our elected officials issues that are important to us. Isn't that the very basis of your job, to listen?
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that will be Michael Carrion, and he'll be followed by Dr. Clyde Williams.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you. Maybe the idea of having Mr. Ray Bradbury here was a really top-notch plan. Maybe he could use city council for a future setting for more of a science fiction. Science fiction that's got more fact to it than some of the things that come out of the council and the mayor's office. Let's talk about the mayor's parking garage plan that needed to come into effect in October. Well, that's not happening until April. Let's talk about the DWP's grading program. What page is that on? And let's talk about the city council's discussions regarding this budget and layoffs. 100, 200, 300, 400, 500, 600, 700. Sounds like science fiction to me. And let's not forget that Ray Bradbury foreshadowed back in the early '60s the need for a light rail project in LA. I believe he also offered to finance part of it. How'd that turn out? Oh, well, now we've got the NTA and their wonderful idea, and the mayor's 3010 plea, I mean, plan. I think it should be a plea, though. Let's discuss some of the things that happened on Wednesday regarding the parking garage. Mr. Garcetti mentioned that the debt payment would be paid down, the $8 million, but you didn't mention how many years are left to pay on that debt payment, so is it worthwhile? Councilwoman Perry mentioned there's no idea about 30 years or 50 years in planning. But let's look at the LA Live scenario and how that took effect in the early to mid-'70s. That's almost 50 years. And let's also think about the options. Nobody ever mentioned having a longer lease period in return for some of the options you offered. And finally, I'd like to thank Councilman Smith, and I can't believe I'm saying these words, for crap, 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 crap. Spam crap has made it to council chambers.
Thank you. Michael Carrion is our next speaker. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams. And he will be followed by Richard Robinson. Good morning.
Morning. My name's Michael Carrion, I'm from the 14th district. People ask me why I come here all the time. I've worked with homeless people for the past 20 years, and I don't think anyone sitting on this, in this council, has sat down with a homeless person and eaten with them what they ate. You go there, you show up, and you bring all these cameras. Go there without the cameras. We came here, I've been waiting for the past hour for Mr. Kocorian's office to give me an answer to something that I've been asking for a month already. I take my hat off today to Mr. Westen. I came in here a month ago and asked for a letter to support addiction. He had it done within a half an hour, and I thank you for that. Mr. Weezer wrote a letter, and I thank him for that. I sit here, one of my colleagues talked about the homeless deal with Mr. Kocorian's office. What took Mr. Weezer 20 minutes is taking Mr. Kocorian a month and a half. That scares me. It really does. The county is closing a facility that has 200 beds for substance abuse, and I don't know if anybody here even knows about it. They don't call it a closure, they call it a consolidation. But that means there's 200 people that won't be getting serviced, which is a total of 3,000 per year. Those people are going to end up here on Skid Row. The cleanup that I'm talking about happened in Mr. Kocorian's office, where they kicked out all the homeless people. Where do you think those homeless people ended up? In your districts. Not in his, in your district. But yet, when we ask for a letter of support, it takes months. I wonder if all of Mr. Kocorian's city business is going to take this long. If it does, it scares me. If he wants to speak to me, I'm sitting right here.
Dr. Williams is our next speaker, Dr. Clyde Williams, then Richard Robinson will follow. After Mr. Robinson will be Walter Becton.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. The Southwest Museum. We just honored Ray Bradbury, great. However, how about Charles Loomis? Well, that's going to come up on another special event. But how about Charles Loomis's legacy to the city of Los Angeles? The Southwest Museum. But what is the Southwest Museum? It's a collection. It's a location. It's a place where people can take pride in what our heritage is. What's going to happen? Well, on August 3rd, the Autry National Center gave us a schedule. That is, 10 years after the merger, they will remove the collection from the Southwest Museum in Highland Park and either put it in Burbank, or maybe by that time they'll have someplace for parts of it to be placed in, the Griffith Park campus. Why do they want it? The collection at the Southwest Museum is the only collection of value that the entire Autry National Center has in order to get grants and international and national recognition in the museum associations. So, what will they do? They've been curating... They've been curating for several years, they will curate even more, they will say what is good, what is bad, they'll sell off the bad stuff in the year 2013, as allowed by the merger agreement. However, they won't comply with the other conditions of the merger agreement, which was to keep the Southwest Museum open, and as a fully functional museum in Highland Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Richard Robinson is our next speaker. After that is Walter Bechtel, he'll be followed by Rusty Millar.
Mr. President, members, I'm looking forward to Mr. Broad's museum. I met Mr. Bradbury about 20 years ago in Santa Barbara. We were building a rescue mission for former Mayor Hal Conklin. In Mr. Labange, through the chair, sir, in Mr. Labange's district, we had the presence of the police this morning. Thank God, because in the church at Hollywood and La Brea, there is a membership that's growing, Christian Science, my stepmother's a Christian Scientist. At that location, Hollywood and La Brea, the Christian Science Church, across the street from my residence, which was built about the same time the Christian Science Church was remodeled in 1959 by my family, Joan Oakley specifically, the alliance that built my stepmother's, the granddaughter of Annie Oakley. She was a good friend of Mary Baker Eddy's. A lot of money poured into the Christian Science Church about 1900 was poured in by my stepmother's grandmother, whose husband built the Prudential Life Insurance Company, uh, whose grandfather, excuse me, built the Prudential Life Insurance Company. But that's another story. Mr. Labange, thank you for the seditious attention to detail when it comes to policing that parking lot, because it's a very good place for the venues of Hollywood's motion picture industry. Thank you.
Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. Rusty Millar follows him, and then Noel Weiss.
Good morning. I wanted to say something about the way, one of the lady, one of these car dealers continually is coming on the radio and saying that nobody goes to the library anymore. There's something problematic with that. I mean, she and a lot of people seem to think everything is on the internet. There's not that much on the internet. You're getting a very watered-down version. I don't know anybody with a book collection, I don't know anybody who has any important documents is even going to let you photograph them, let alone scan them and put them on the internet. You're not getting hardly anything on the internet at all. You think it's all there, and all you've got to do is go to the internet. You're wrong. There's rare book collections are not all coming on over LOC, the Library of Congress. Everything is not there. And a lot of what we do, the research that we do in genealogy, we find are still, and especially the photographs are in private collections. And these people are very stingy with these things. If you want that kind of information, you cannot just go to the internet, and there it is, click. That's why I would, I wanted to say that I think that Mr. Gates and his attempt to try to get the billionaires of our country to donate to what he thinks people ought to donate to, I'm sure is excluding donation to the public libraries, because all he is is internet. I would hope that somebody would understand that we still need the libraries to get going, and I would hope that one or two of the billionaires would see that as important, and that somebody would donate some money to our public libraries.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Rusty Millar is our next patient speaker. After that is Noel Weiss, then we'll be headed to item 34. After that. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council. My name is Rusty Millar, I'm co-chair of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council this year, and I'm just here tonight, or today, to give kudos to some city departments. Last night, our neighborhood council held a town hall public safety meeting in response to a great number of home burglaries that have occurred in the Silver Lake area south of Sunset over the past couple of years. And I believe the police department even had a press conference yesterday pertaining to three actions that happened that day or the night before. But we had Commissioner Cynthia Ruiz from the Board of Public Works, Jose Garcia, who's the superintendent over the North Central Yard, Captain Farfan from Parking Enforcement, additionally Captain Ruiz from Rampart, and Captain Lindsay from Northeast Division to answer questions from a lot of folks. And, you know, what goes on when burglaries or anything else that takes place in a community? There's a lot of other city agencies, like Public Works, which deals with sanitation, that can help pick up, you know, bulky items and other broken window kind of things in a community. And also Parking Enforcement can help communities also. And certainly also want to thank Detective Moda from Rampart, who's been investigating a lot of these activities. And of course, everybody's favorite senior lead officer up there, Al Polhonky. And of course, none of this can be done without the support of staff from the City Council Office, like Mitchell Farrell from CD 13, and Mary Rodriguez from Council District 4. These are people that really help a lot of people at the local level get things done in the community, and pull together, you know, a meeting like this, so people have the ability to get, or find where they can go to for help within the city family of services. So I just want to say thank you to all the folks that were involved last night, and then of course invite all of you to Sunset Junction this weekend. There'll be 200 or 300 people show up.
Thank you very much. We couldn't do without you too, Rusty, and thank you for that reminder. We'll probably re-announce it during announcements, but Sunset Boulevard and Silver Lake will be closed for Sunset Junction, the traditional festival that happens that time, so do factor that in for people with traffic as well. Noel Weiss is our last speaker.
Good afternoon. I've got some quick summer reading for the council. Hopefully, we can arrange basically to get it through you. But, you know, I had to come because I couldn't be, thank you, officer, I couldn't be more concerned about the, on Wednesday, seeing this on TV, when you had the renters sitting here, and on the other hand, you had the capitalists, the Wall Street guys, who basically want to make money off of the backs of the city by way of selling these parking lots, selling these parking meters, you can call it lease, it's a sale, it's mortgaging the future of our next generation. It is wrong to do it. But meanwhile, we have a system. I think what we're talking about in terms of trying to meet the needs of the people, we have to reform the governance system respectfully, and again, I think rather than criticize, have a solution. One solution that I offer for the considerationist bodies is to change one rule, one rule. Have every six months, every motion that's made, have it automatically come back to this council for review. I don't think it's right, be it Ed Reyes, be it Chairman Wesson, be it any chairman of this committee, of this, of a committee, to be able to sit on something for that long. It's just not right. I think that would force the council to consider, and each individual council member to consider these issues, and hopefully we can get a vibrant debate, because that's honestly, people, what we're missing. You have a system where you can't answer, you don't have a lot of time, there really isn't debate, there really isn't the kind of interaction that the public really needs. And most of the time, it's okay, because you guys react. But now we need proactivity, we need a lot of positive action, and it's hard to make that transition. Hopefully, you can find your way clear to do it, and that's my suggestion for the day. But going forward, honestly, Eli Broad could write a check, Richard Reardon could write a check for the $50 million that's involved. There are other alternatives to have to deal with Wall Street in this context. We can do it, but you've got to draw the people out, and you can't do it just in one or two-minute increments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, I appreciate the handouts. Since it is basically almost a, you know, quarter tree that died for that, feel free to email those to me at least, in person, in the future, to save some paper, but thank you. We will now, I'll close general public comment, we'll go to item 34, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. Those of you that have ever had to put an enclosure in an area know how difficult it is, and know how, how much of an emotional process it is. Well, Mr. Weezer, when were we sworn in the first time?
2005.
November 30th, or something like that. I want to say seven or eight days later, all of a sudden, I started getting a lot of phone calls to my office saying that these barriers came up. So that's something that I inherited from my predecessor. We then went out, we did what we could with the community. I truly believe at the end of the day, we've got a significant number of people who support this. I want to applaud them, Demetrius Poole in particular. This is a petition with about 200 of the residents that are in support of this area, this closure. The staff told us that we needed to make some technical changes, that's why this motion is before you. Mr. President, in the interest of time, I'd like to, I believe we have, how many people are in support of this? If you would please stand, stand. And how many people are opposed? How many, how many people, how many people are opposed? We have one person that's opposed. We have one sergeant, sergeant, she'll do this all day if you don't stop her, okay? Anyway, I'd like to have six people, or five people who are for it speak for one minute each, and then since we only have the one person that's here today that's opposed, if we could give her the two minutes, and I would request a unanimous vote on this. Thank you.
We do have a total of 20 cards. We have Diana Lawrence first speaking against, and then we have also some five folks here, but we'll read everybody's name into the record, even if you don't get to speak today. Diana Lawrence, good morning.
We were told two days ago about this meeting, there are a lot of people who wanted to come and couldn't make it. I object to the use of the categorical exemption for this project. Before you move to readopt this amended motion, you might want to consider this. There has never been any official proof offered that traffic or crime problems in our community were bad enough to justify installing barriers and a gate. There have been no DOT studies to determine unsafe traffic problems. The crimes cities, the city's crime statistics prior to the original motion showed our community had a low crime rate, there were no sign-offs from LAFD or LAPD prior to the motion, and during the five years that have passed, they have only produced anecdotes and signatures, but no studies. Popularity and anecdotes are not the legal requirements for installing barriers in our community. Proof that there is a real problem is. Where is the proof? It has never been given. Regarding the very real issues of emergency and fire station access, the full closure at Manhattan 20th is right next to Fire Station 26. They were not consulted prior to the motion, and have been ignored since they woke up to find they could no longer access the street next to their station. I don't know about the top brass in LAFD, but our local, on-the-ground fire department have repeatedly asserted that the gates delay service, result in deaths, and all the captains at Station 26 and other LAFD chiefs have consistently objected to this full closure and impending gate. They have been consistently ignored. Look at Section D. You may not be aware, but they, we are also talking about a plan to install a gate, gate in, a gate in a historic district, is not on the list of exempted actions in the city's own guidelines. There is a long list of problems, including traffic that has been rerouted in front of a handicapped school for the blind. I am encouraging you to not rubber stamp this motion, and at least table it so that full traffic, crime, and impact studies can be done, and real facts documented. I am concerned that approval of this motion is not legally defensible.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is James Shiflett. After Mr. Shiflett will be Christine Carlson. Thank you for your patience, and good afternoon.
Good day. 1947, my parents moved into the neighborhood. They had to go fight to the Supreme Court in order to move in there legally, because there was a housing covenant against it. I've lived there for 62 years. The most significant change other than my parents' move would be the barrier at the end of the street. I find that, I don't know what she's talking about in terms of the fire department, I've watched the ambulance go down the street, I've come out of the back of the fire department, and then turn the sirens on. So the access seems to be functional. I support the barrier. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Carlson is next. After that will be Kenneth Lima.
Hello, my name's Chris Carlson, and I'm here today to represent as the president of the Western Heights Neighborhood Association, and also as the elected area representative for the UNNC. We have a neighborhood here that although not unanimous, an overwhelming majority of residents, both homeowners and renters, have repeatedly supported, and we have turned our process. We, Councilman Wesson, had a series of public meetings, had a series of direct polling of the neighborhood, and had a direct vote. We want that democratic process to be, to be recognized and enforced, because since even temporary barriers have been installed, there has been a dramatic increase in street safety with the end to late-night, high-speed street racing, which repeatedly, I was out at 2:00 and 4:00 in the morning in front of my house trying to get license numbers. It has ended a barrage of cut-through traffic, some of which, a street safety survey was clocked at 86 miles per hour, and it's dramatically improved the safety to the children and members of the community, and I hope to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Lima is our next speaker. Then Dan Hakes.
It's a really long walk. I've been living there for 10 or 12 years, and she said, she left, she said that lives would be lost, lives would be lost if you guys don't reinstall those. My brother was almost hit on his bike when they were installed already. It's a moral issue, it's something, it's going to be on your hands if somebody does die if you don't improve this again. Somebody's going to go speeding, some kid's going to be playing in the street, and somebody's going to die. She said its lives would be lost because there's no access to the fire department. The fire department has access, lives aren't being lost. And I'm so scared to cross the street sometimes, even with barriers. If you guys let these go, somebody's going to get hurt, that's, I can't stress that enough. Somebody will get hurt. So you guys, I'm in favor of it. Every teenager, every kid is in favor of it. Every kid that wants their life is in favor of it.
Thank you. Dan Hakes is our next speaker, and thank you for coming to City Council. Sean O'Brien will follow.
Hi, my name is Dan Hakes. I live on 21st Street, and I have to say, the traffic barriers have improved the quality of life on our street. I lived there two years before the barriers went in, and in that two years, at least seven times, I was almost plowed down by people zooming down the street. They, they would get off the freeway, Arlington is jammed, they would go up our street during traffic, during rush hour, and you could count it in the hundreds per hour, they're going 50, 60 miles an hour, there are kids on the street. I think it's very important that you do approve these barriers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hakes. Sean O'Brien. And then Janine Masucci.
Hello, my name's Sean O'Brien. I live at 2160 West 20th Street. We're about four houses from the full bear, street closure, and I just want to say, I've lived there for eight years, and in the time I've lived there before the barriers, I personally witnessed several accidents with neighbors pulling out of the driveways, being hit literally by cars speeding down our street, both going, trying to get to the freeway and get off the freeway. We're just one, you know, a couple hundred feet away from the freeway entrance. So I definitely support the barriers in terms of safety to the neighborhood. Secondly, I've also been involved in the planning committee for constructing the barriers in the last year, year and a half, and I just want to reiterate the, just the large amount of effort, time, and money that's been put in by a majority of the neighbors in Western Heights to not only fundraise, we've had home tours, we've done just a variety of activities to raise funds. to raise funds for the barriers. We've had countless, countless meetings and time and effort by a lot of people, and it's just, you know, we're at the point now where we really want to move forward. I think we've done a lot of work as a neighborhood to do that, and I highly stress the, you know, or would really like the council to vote in favor of this motion. Thank you very much.
Janine Masucci. Don't worry, take your time. He waited long enough, don't worry.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, and especially thank you, Councilman. I just want to say, in contrast to Ms. Lawrence's statement that there were no surveys done or any, there was a traffic report done, I requested it, they came in, they put the strip on the street, and they also put the big clock that tells you how quickly you're driving, and the report was, I don't know where the report is, and we've tried to find it, but what I remember when they came and told me about the report, they told me that the average speed on our street was 52 miles an hour. It's a 25 mile an hour speed zone, and the number of cars was off the charts. It's a unique closure because of our proximity to the freeway. We'd really like you to look at the area and really take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to those speakers. Per Mr. Wesson's instructions, I'm just going to read into the record the other speakers that were here and took time to be here as well. Kim Watson, Vivian Juder-Frankel, Daniel Frankel, Jennifer Bozart-Watson, Catherine Larkin, Brian Jett, Giselle Sanchez-Rochelle, Natalie Nath, Sue Ann Jures, Luisa Relia, Herman DeBoes, Demetrius Poole, and Jordan Poole. And my apologies if I mispronounced anybody's name, but thank you all for being here. And Mr. Labange is next.
I just wanted to rise to support the Councilman of the 10th District. Much of your work is done to revitalize neighborhoods. And never was I more impressed than last summer at the opening at, right down from LA High School at the park, right there at Queen Anne, and all the people were there to play softball. And then I flew to, when I drive around, I get off the freeway, I go through your district, and I see how you're revitalizing neighborhoods, what you're doing on Washington Boulevard, all those streets. This is important to preserve your neighborhood. So, and I just want to say, Herb Wesson, this is such an important thing because these houses were built with such quality at time, and now you have people who are going to have this as a neighborhood that all neighborhoods should be. So the big hand goes to Herb Wesson for this. Thank you, Herb.
Mr. Wesson to conclude.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Labange, even though I'm concerned that he's spending so much time in my district, Mr. Rosendahl. I want you, I want you to go to, I want you to go to Coretta's district and then report back on what-
Don't worry, he's mostly in CD 13 all the time.
Yeah, I bet. He really is the Councilman for the City of Los Angeles, so, so I thank you for that. But I really want to thank the individuals who hired me to do this job, and that's the people from the community. Many of them, if not all of them, work. They could be at work today, they've been here since, some of them before 10 o'clock to show their support. I appreciate them trying to correct some of the false statements that were made earlier, but I'm just proud of them. I do think the community is being upgraded, and it's not just because of the things that we do, it's because of the partnership that we have with a very, very active community. And lastly, two of my oldest friends and individuals who have, if I had gray hair, these two people might have helped cause me to get it, but they've been good friends. They care a lot about this community. They've been activists before I started working there, and that's Maureen and Herman DeBoes, who've been there since, I've known since 1987. Members, I ask for a unanimous vote on this item.
Thank you very much. And with that, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you all very much. Well, next go to item number 26. Thank you for your patience today as well, folks. We appreciate everybody waiting throughout most of the morning for that item. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker on item 26.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. My concerns, again, this is an item that deals with the redevelopment agency, the Community Redevelopment Agency, and why they have access to AB 1290 funds. In the upfront version, I would, the public would vote on to get these funds or the agency that would create these funds. You have the state wanting to take redevelopment agency funds away to help balance the budget. And then you have this situation, we have AB 1290 funds that sounds like a state bill would have created these funds going to the redevelopment agencies. So you have what's created is just a dog chasing its tail. Sounds like a load of crap to me. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close comments for item 26. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next is 27. Mr. Sacks, if you'd like to come forward on item 27.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Professional consulting services to the city attorney's office. You know, LAUSD has a problem with its budget, and one of the things that have come out in the budget discussions was the fact that they're paying over the top in consulting fees for this type of, for work for LAUSD. And what shows up on a well-balanced city budget, that I guess starting on October 1st will be losing $6 million a week, or being a red $6 million a week, is payments to consulting firms for legal advice. We hear so much about how on top of things our legal offices are, why are you paying an extra $200,000 for legal advice? It's just more crap. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 27, oh, sorry, yeah, we voted on 26 already, so we have 27 before us. Mr. Parks on item 27.
Then, colleagues, I'd like to make a verbal amendment to this motion. Historically, when we've allowed the city attorney to add personnel to their budget, it's come out of their personnel budget. The account that's mentioned in this motion is for outside attorneys dealing with personnel matters. And so verbally, I'd like to amend it that the council, subject to the approval of the mayor, amend the proposed budget of the office of the attorney by decreasing funding by $204,000 in the salary account 1010, Department 12 Fund 100, and increasing funding by $204,000 in the contractual service account number 3040, Department 12 Fund 100.
Okay, there's no objection, accept that as a friendly amendment. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. And if we do have excess funds that are in, I missed, sorry?
The screen keeps showing 26.
Yeah, I know, for some reason it's not on our screens. It's on, it's on the clerk's screen. Is it up there too? Up there, okay. Let's just announce and we'll revote it. It's, we might be having a, okay, it's now on both. Let's take that vote again. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And if there's excess outside council funds that can cover that, we will work to transfer that to make that whole. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 31, call special for cards.
Mr. Sacks, would I come forward on item 31? Then Dr. Williams, you'll follow Mr. Sacks. Dr. Williams, you want to come up first or Mr. Sacks coming? Come on. You got pole position right there, so.
Thank God it's recessed next week. Okay. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrow Road, Elsina, Northeast LA. Citywide special events. We had those a long time ago. We still have them. They're called neighborhood council events, I think. However, the relationship between the special events procedure and the neighborhood council procedures seem to be at odds or different, at least. I'd highly recommend that this particular procedure be amended so that all citywide special events have concurrence by the neighborhood councils to coordinate the fundings because many of the special events come to the neighborhood councils for additional funds. So I'd highly recommend that you add to all special events the approvals of the appropriate neighborhood councils. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks?
No, we don't want to. Thank you again. This has been a sore spot, a sore spot in, on the public side of this lectern regarding your free spending and special events. My concerns are, what are the, are all special events? I mean, for years, we heard, we didn't hear, while people were complaining about special event fees, we never heard about the seven venues that were exempted from paying the special event fees. Those would be including the Coliseum, LA Live, Staples Center, the Hollywood Bowl, the Dodger Stadium, and I believe there might be two others. But there's still going to be events held at Staples Center, there's still going to be events held at Dodger Stadium, there's still going to be events held at Hollywood Bowl. Those listed as special events would be very pertinent to know the cost for those events because they take up a bulk of the expenditures. And also, one other thing regarding the special events, these events that the CLA has listed that are being, I guess, allowed, will they be paid for through overtime? I remember that when the Transportation Committee had a meeting, the discussion was that their overtime, LA DOT's overtime, was falling short, there was a shortfall, basically a shortfall, and it was due to the funding at special events. So the question is, are events at Staples Center, and events at the Coliseum, and events at the Hollywood Bowl, and the Dodger Stadium, are those overtime projects? That would be very interesting to find out because that's just rewarding on top of insult. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Ms. Hahn?
Is there anybody here from, on this item? I think, I think this is an opportunity to at least talk a little bit about the process of the 50% subsidies for citywide special events. Is this the same process that we go through for 50% subsidy for any other event in the city that is not specifically considered a citywide event?
Paul Smith, CLA's office. The process which we provide subsidies to special events, it's covered by the ordinance that you passed in October.
Right, so it's the same process, whether it's on this list-
It's the same. Right. There are two, there are two pools of funds.
Right.
One pool of funds is-
Got it, I got all that. I just want to know about the process.
So, the special event ordinance requires that on the annual basis, that the council approve a list-
Got it.
-of citywide special events, which are defined as events that have interest to the populace of the citizens of three different councils.
Right, but in terms of this 50% subsidy, it's in the form of a reimbursement.
Yes.
And that's the same process that the other event organizers go through that aren't citywide, is what I'm asking. It's two separate pots of money, but it's the same process.
The ordinance provides that prior to the-
Got it. I, in your mind, how are we doing on this process? That says it all.
I think for a number of years, we had a process where city costs were waived. And I think that in that transition period between when we're-
How long has that transition period been?
We started in late October, early November.
It's almost a year.
Almost a year, yeah.
Here's what I'm hearing, I was trying to lead the witness, but here's what I'm hearing from many of the nonprofits, particularly in my district. The reimbursement process is extremely slow, is extremely difficult, extremely burdensome. And again, we're asking many of these organizations, this is new, to put the money up front and ask to be reimbursed. I'm not hearing any good comments coming from our nonprofits in the process of getting reimbursed, whether it's a citywide event or whether it's a district event. Is there anything you can recommend to make this process better for our nonprofits?
Yes, frankly, that process, reimbursement process comes through me and the city clerk. One, I'm getting better at what we're doing. I think the information is getting out there quicker and faster to the event sponsors about what they are required to submit.
I'm not, I'm not hearing that they don't know what they're required to submit. What I'm hearing is they submit all the right documents, and we have a very difficult time in reimbursing them in a timely manner.
Once it gets approved, and it gets approved by the council president's office, it goes to the city clerk, and then they go through their own process of verifying the information and then getting the check cut and then back to the-
You know what I'd like to ask colleagues, is that possibly we get a report back, maybe sometime in, when we come back in September, on some recommendations from you to make this process smoother, quicker, more efficient, and effective. That's what I would like. It'll make you, give a little thought to this, it'll, you know, take a little call together of all the staff members in all the departments that deal with this. How can we make this better? Because we've drastically changed the way events are held in the City of Los Angeles, drastically. So I would like us to really focus on how do we, if we've got an ordinance, if we've made the effort to talk about a 50% subsidy of nonprofits, let's make that procedure, you know, quick, easy, streamlined. So I'd like for you to come back and give that report to us on how you're going to make it better. Don't just tell us how it works. I want you to tell us how you can shave off months, months of this process.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Labange.
Just real quick, Paul. Also, a couple years ago, I was talking with people in City Hall, I said we should have an office of special events, an expert who people could go to. Ms. Hahn, I think you shared this too, an office of special events where someone who's trying to do something special in their neighborhood doesn't hit a bunch of hurdles. So put in the back of mind and think about that, because we're here to help people, and that's why we should make it easy for people to celebrate their neighborhoods, okay, Paul? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And I want to give a little time to Ms. Hahn here, if I could, but how long have we been studying this plan, Paul?
We've been administering this thing beginning of, prior to that.
How long have we been studying?
We've been studying this for a while, yes.
A while is like years?
The process to where we got it adopted through, there was a number of years that was being examined.
Number of years, so this has been studied a lot. I just want, Ms. Hahn, what more do you want them to study? Because I'm not sure, I, I-
Study. I don't want them to study the process. I want them to come back with recommendations on how this can work better for our nonprofits. It's an extremely burdensome process.
Yes.
We've got the process down, we don't need to study anymore. What I want them to do is put a little thinking into how we make it better, because right now, it does not work well.
Do you have some recommendations? That's what I'm asking.
That's what I'm asking them to come back with.
All right, because that's kind of what they've done here.
No, they haven't. They have not given me one recommendation on how to make it better.
All right.
Thank you very much. If there's no objection to getting that report back, Mr. Alakon.
I, I just wanted to weigh in to say that I concur with Ms. Hahn and Mr. Labange. The special events function was, is critical to the cultural atmosphere of Los Angeles, and many organizations have been undermined. For example, we lost the Canoga Park Parade, which 5,000 people would, I'm sorry, 50,000 people would participate in coming out to that- people would participate in coming out to that parade, but we lost it simply because of a bureaucratic snafu. If they had known there were ways to get around the front-loading of the money, they would have had that parade. Instead of recognizing on Memorial Day a tremendous, the tremendous contributions of those who have fought for this country, people stayed at home and probably didn't even realize what Memorial Day was all about. And so I think there are things that should be, and I, for full admission, I voted against this because of exactly this problem, that those, it seems to me that those council members who know the system are able to work with those nonprofits, assuming those nonprofits know that their council member knows the system. But there are others who are being helped along by their councilmen to overcome the hurdles with special treatment, particularly with regard to front-loading, not having to front-load the money. And then many organizations assume that the system cannot be modified or changed with council intervention, and so they don't even apply, and their events fall by the wayside. So as much as this plan had been studied, it's still an experiment. And I think we need to recognize that it needs much improvement, and I concur, as I said, with those colleagues who want to see that improvement.
Thank you. We'll end that request for a report back, and meanwhile, open the roll on this, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. If we can call the roll for a special meeting, please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weiser, Kretzke, Cory, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rose Mel Smith, Wesson, Zan, Gocetti, eleven members present and equine. Mr. President?
Okay, first order of business, please.
Items 39 through 42, items for which public hearings have been held.
Call 42 special, please, and any other specials on 39 through 42. If not, sorry. We called 42 special, I know Mr. Parks is going to recuse himself, I'm just asking for specials right now, 39 through 42. If not, okay, on 39 through 41, let's open... Hold on one second. Okay, please open the roll on 39 through 41. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. If you could stay here, Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks has to leave first on item 42, then we'll come to 43 through 51, and we'll make sure we call 45 special for you. Councilmember Parks on item 42 has recused himself and is out of the room. Mr. Smith?
Just on 42, I just asked that we amended to delete item number three.
Okay, without objection. So ordered, let's go ahead, as amended, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that is approved. Let's go through the next section and call specials from that, 53 through 51.
Items 43 through 51 are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, and we have cards on any of those?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on items 45, 47, and 51.
Okay, anybody wishing to call specials from the balance, Mr. Labange?
Fifty, please.
Mr. Labange on 50. Any others? If not, let's take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, why don't we take up 45 first, and Ms. Perry will recuse herself on item And we have one speaker card on this item, Daniel Wright.
Good morning, councilmembers. Daniel Wright of the Silverstein Law Firm, representing Kramer Metals. Today, you will consider a motion to again rescind the approvals for the CRA folly known as the Slauson Central Retail Project, a proposed shopping center at Slauson and Central Avenues. Our client, Kramer Metals, obtained city approvals to build this shopping center in 2003 on its own land, but in a poster child case of eminent domain abuse led by council member Jan Perry, the CRA took the property from the rightful owners and gave it to a politically favored developer and a group called Concerned Citizens of South Central. That group has been sued for loan defaults by the city of Los Angeles and defrauded the state of California on hundreds of thousands of dollars, hardly a model citizen for the city and CRA to give our land to. Today is the third time in the last two and a half years that our law firm, the Silverstein Law Firm, has made the CRA or city council rescind all project approvals. On February 8th, 2008, the city council approved the project with an obscene guaranteed 18 percent profit for Jacksonville, Florida developer Regency Realty, and the sale of the land for 1.1 million dollars when CRA paid 4.5 million to buy it in eminent domain. In the face of our environmental lawsuit, the CRA board rescinded the project approvals on March 20th, 2008. On August 15th, 2008, the council reapproved this bad deal for L.A. taxpayers. We then sued city council for Brown Act and city charter violations. In January of this year, the city lost the trial, and you were ordered to rescind the approvals again. You did so in June. It was in this case that your city clerk admitted under oath that you were falsifying your meeting minutes, and that the public learned that the council members were voting for city business while in the bathroom. In response to that court ruling that you then reapproved on July 9th, and now in response to our Brown Act violation letter, you're rescinding again. When will the nightmare end? Thank you.
Thank you, that'll close our public comment on item 45. Please prepare the roll. Oh, sorry, Mr. Kretz.
I think the comments about the city clerk would merit some sort of clarifying response, if possible. I can't imagine that we actually had testimony on falsifying meeting minutes on the record, so I think we should say something in response to that.
Unfortunately, it was a different city clerk, I've been informed that was here that day, so we may not be able to. Mr. City Attorney, is your legal advice to...
From my understanding, it's the city clerk who made that representation has now retired, and the judge did not make its ruling on that discussion by the clerk. It was limited to the Brown Act ruling, actually.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote on 45.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Next, we'll take up 47, it's called special for a card. Dr. Williams, if you'd like to come forward on 47.
Dr. Clyde Williams, Elsring, Northeast L.A. Activated pedestrian crossings, what is going on? These are particular things that the communities need. Did the community neighborhood council have any participation in this? Because in Lincoln Heights, the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council had to defend three pedestrian crossings from LADOT because they interfere with normal, signalized, phased traffic flow. In Highland Park, we also have another one. It also interferes with smooth traffic flow as defined by LADOT. I hope these will be protected and implemented in a timely fashion so that LADOT might not signalize them. Thank you.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Labange called special number 50. Let's go to 51 in the meantime, and Mr. Sax, if I could come forward.
Thank you. Good afternoon again, Arnold Sax. Reason I held this, basically, refers to the requirement on these building, on these projects for the greenland, the park responsibility that comes from the developers. And I was wondering if there's a kind of a time limit on when these parks should be made available to the public? It's almost fascinating. You have, just recently, the groundbreaking for the Grand Avenue Park over here, that's going to extend from City Hall up through the, behind the County Board of Supervisors, but no building, no development of the project. And then conversely, you have the area by Staples Center, the AEG, the L.A. Live area, where everything is built up almost totally, except Phase Two, but no green area. And now you have Quimby fees on these projects. So it just brings to mind a question about when are the parks, or when is the park responsibility part of the project developed for the use by, you know, the public? When is that introduced? When is that, when is that concern brought to the forefront? There's a lot of projects that have been developed in downtown L.A., but I don't recall very many parks being equally developed in accordance with the Quimby rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Please prepare the roll on 51 and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Mr. Labange, item 50.
Members, I just want all of us to stand. We have to do one minor modification on this issue here. It is, note, it is Senate Legislation 1334, verbal amendment. Is that all right, Mr. Clerk? You got that correct? This calls that we support Senate Bill 1334 and House Resolution 847 that entitles those who were the first responders in 9/11 to Health Compensation Act, which would provide long-term health care for our first responders. Many of those New York firefighters from around the greater tri-state area, as well, even maybe in some of our own, who spent weeks back there on the pile at 9/11, should get this. And it's stuck in Congress, and hopefully this voice of this city council will ring loud all across the country and call other cities to stand for those first responders for long-term health care. Chief Frazier, appreciative, thank you, Chief Frazier. Chief Frazier is here on behalf of the chief priests. Call for an eye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, and we honor all of those who helped out in 9/11, and I know we had individuals who went from Los Angeles to New York to be a part of those teams as well. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for provision of health care and getting behind that. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that is approved. If we can go, adjourn the special meeting, go back to the regular meeting.
And, Mr. President, there are a number of special motions today, the first being Special One, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, Special One, please, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, city staff has learned that several federal agencies, including the Federal Reserve Board and the FDIC, are requesting public input regarding updating the Community Reinvestment Act. There is an immediate need to act for the selected departments to submit testimony to the federal agencies before the August 31st deadline. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Anybody on the findings? Mr. Alacon on the finding? Oh, okay. Please open the roll, then on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, on the substance, Mr. Alacon.
No, I, well, the maker...
Sorry? Mr. Parks?
We have until August the 20th, the 31st, to get our public testimony in. This is an effort by the federal government to go across the nation and have public hearings. We've missed the August 17th meeting that was in the city of L.A. It'd be the only opportunity for the city to have their thoughts and concerns relayed as they relate, as this organization is looking to revamp the current system.
All right, Mr. Alacon?
As councilmembers, this is a very important opportunity for the city of Los Angeles. I fully support the motion. In fact, I did submit testimony just a day or two ago, and as well as the Community Development Department submitted testimony to reinvigorate the concept, not only the concept of community reinvestment, but really put teeth into it so that the banks and lending institutions would be much more focused on giving back to the communities where they are making huge profits. I do want to mention that just on today's agenda, Mr. Parks introduced item 39, and because of his recommendations, we sent a very loud message to banks that are suing, that we are suing, that we're not going to give them bond sales where they could make profits when we are suing them because they refuse to give us information that is critical to informing the people of Los Angeles about monies that we believe are owed to the people of Los Angeles. So I want to commend Mr. Parks publicly for fighting that cause, and I believe by giving it to an equally talented firm, or a series of firms that in fact have more of an investment in Los Angeles in terms of their location, their employment base, and their focus of work, that I think is the best way to send a message to banking institutions that if they do not provide better opportunities for communities throughout where they are invested, then we will not invest in them. And that's exactly what we did with item 39. Again, I ask you to review item 39 because we sent a very loud message to people like the Bank of America, and Morgan, and all the others. So thank you, Mr. Parks, for this motion. I encourage my colleagues to submit letters, and encourage departments to do the same. This is a very important motion for, or a very important opportunity for the people of Los Angeles to weigh in on the national policy.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
And thank you, and I fully support what you're doing here, Richard, and I appreciate that, and Mr. Parks, too. My question, I saw this notice come across my desk a couple of days ago, and I'm going, why are we getting such a late notice? Is that the way the federal government does this thing? I mean, they normally wait to the very last minute on our national policy like that. How did we miss the boat, is what I'm asking? Because I just got the notice on my desk the other day, and I was shocked, quite frankly.
Actually, I can't speak to the notice, but apparently they announced it June 17th, maybe through a national notification system, I don't know. But we were aware of it in June, and I apologize that I did not introduce the motion, I didn't think of it, and that's why I'm commending Mr. Parks.
Thank you.
All right, we have a public comment, yes, Mr. Sax, you have a minute left.
Thank you, and thank you for asking that question, because that was the first question I was going to ask, is how come we missed notification? But if you knew about, the second part of this problem now becomes to light, is that the city was notified on June 17th. I believe you had the hearings on the bond sales for both the funding for the loans for the city to operate, and for the water bonds in July. So you would have had the notice regarding those bond sales afterwards, after being notified of this. And it came up in those hearings that the reason those, the banks that are suing the city of L.A. are involved as part of the list that you're able to choose from is because they're the only ones who would issue the paper, that the mortgage, the brokerage firms don't issue the paper that the city needs for its funding. So that was the reason those banks are involved in these bond sales. So clarify that for the public.
Thank you, that will close our public comment on this item. Mr. Parks?
I just wanted to clarify one issue on awareness, and that we found out about this just before the motion went in, after LAEDC called and said they were participating, and that was wondering if the city was taking a road. So that's how we became aware from the outside community source. And one thing for all of us, because we are on vacation or recess, the CLA has been given the task of collecting those documents and submitting them in our behalf.
An unprecedented expansion of CLA power. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, use that power well. Next item, please.
All right, Special Two, and the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
Mr. Cory on the findings?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. This week, I learned for the first time that on, during the time that we will be on recess, on August 29, the hazardous materials squad at Fire Station 87 will be redeployed in a way that will potentially have an impact on response times, either for hazardous material response or fire response in the San Fernando Valley. During the budget process, the council unanimously approved my motion that called upon the CAO, the CLA, and the Fire Department to negotiate with the Department of Water and Power and to have a report back to the Energy and the Environment Committee on finding alternative sources of funding for that very squad to ensure its continued operation. I learned, upon learning about this deadline this week, I contacted the chief of the Fire Department, I contacted the general manager of the Department of Water and Power, as well as the CAO, and had discussions with them. It appears that, as of now, an alternative funding source has not been found for those hazardous material squads, but there is an interest in continuing that dialogue. That process remains ongoing, and I hope that there will be progress that comes out of these negotiations. But unfortunately, there won't be time to act on them before the August 29 date that's been set by the Fire Department for that redeployment. There's an immediate need to take action right now because of the gravity of the risk that would be posed if there's any redeployment of the hazardous material experts who are on this squad. And I believe that it's important to maintain that squad at full strength as these discussions continue regarding alternative funding sources and during the time that the council is in recess. So this special motion merely attempts to maintain the status quo for 30 days to allow those discussions to continue until we return, and allow us to act after we return from recess.
Thank you. Mr. Smith on the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, well, I concur with everything Mr. Kukorian has said, and Mr. McCosker even on this issue. We agree this is an unfortunate situation. But on the findings, Mr. City Attorney, I don't concur, and that is the problem. On the findings, we knew about this. It was in our budget. We all approved that. We've had a working task force that was appointed by the chairman of the Budget Committee, which Mr. Kukorian's staff has been participating in, talking about this situation for a month and a half. So there's knowledge out there, everybody knew about it. Council approved it. It is unfortunate that we've gotten to this point, but your instructions were to find alternatives. They have not been found yet. That is not information that is new to us. We've known that for weeks. We've had those ongoing discussions. And so I do not believe that the findings can be found. I'm willing to talk about the issue, and I think there's a solution, there's a workaround that solves the problem, that the people of the San Fernando Valley first, and Ms. Hawn, your district second, will be covered. But right now, on the findings, this is not information that came to us without our knowledge. Your staff has been participating in those discussions for a month and a half. This is not a last-minute deal, it's in our budget, which we approved in May, and we can't legally make the findings, and that is the problem. I will be happy to talk about afterwards the fact that we have found a workaround to solve the problem, but that is not the issue at the moment. So just on the findings alone, this is not new information that came to our attention prior to the posting this agenda. It was something you approved already. You can't undo what you approved already, and it's not something you didn't know was going to happen.
Mr. Kukorian.
Yeah, if I may. There's nothing in the budget that provided that August 29 would be the day for that redeployment. And in fact, this week, we learned that the planned redeployment of EMS supervisors, which had been scheduled for August 29, was going to be continued for another pay period. That hasn't happened with regard for the hazardous material staff. That was learned this week, that they were going to be treated in a differential way from the others who had been scheduled to be redeployed by the department, not by the council, not by the budget, but by the department on August 29. So the fact that the EMS captains, supervisors, for example, could be continued to September 12 indicates, you know, by following the same logic, that the fact that the, there has been no resolution on 87s as of this minute is new information. That could have happened this minute. It could have happened an hour ago, as it did with the EMS supervisors, but it has not. And as of this minute, we are learning that there still isn't resolution of that issue, as there could have been with the other, and as it in fact was with EMS supervisors. So for that reason, yes, there has been discussion about this in the past, there's been discussion about the redeployment, but the deadline was not a part of the budget. And even up until the time that the agenda was sent out, and even up until this very hour, a resolution could have happened, but it has not.
Mr. Smith.
Okay, Mr. Santana and Mr. Miller, if you come forward, please. On the findings, was there a plan in the budget to eliminate these concessions and do this? Was it part of the budget?
Yes, it is. The action, frankly, should have happened on July 1. I think that was what's comfortably in the budget. My understanding, it hasn't occurred because your committee, as well as the Fire Department, have been trying to identify solutions in the context of labor negotiations. We've been working with UFLAC to identify enough concessions to generate the savings so that we could restore these particular services, as well as modified staffing. And we haven't been successful in doing so.
And I think you just hit on, but the second question I was going to have is, part of this is wrapped up in union negotiations, which have not been resolved at this point. There was supposed to be a resolution, that has not been found. But on July 1, the chief was supposed to have done this. He chose not to, in hopes that these other things would resolve the problem. It didn't. But July 1 was the date, not this week or next week.
The budget assumed an effective date of July 1.
Thank you. And, Mr. Miller, does the council have the authority to make those personnel moves, or is that the chief's responsibility?
It is the chief's responsibility to make the personnel moves, in his purview.
Yeah, so he was following the instructions of this council. The date he chose is one that he has the right to choose.
Yes, that is his prerogative.
Yeah, he chose to wait rather than July 1, in hopes that there'd be a resolution. So again, members of the council, from a point of view that the findings can't be met, this is stuff you approved. This was in the budget. The July date was the real date. He chose to prolong it in hopes there'd be resolution. There was no resolution till, and as of this day, there is no resolution. The chief of the Fire Department has the authority to make that move without the permission of the council, because we are instructed him to do it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I don't think there's anything more that needs to be said, ladies and gentlemen. We can't make the findings that this meets the criteria of the state law.
Mr. Alakon on the findings.
Counsel members, I think Mr. Smith has argued Mr. Kukorian's point. The fact is that if it should have, would have, could have happened on July 1, it didn't happen, therefore, the dynamic changed, the information therefore changed as well. There was no reason to believe that this termination was going to occur at any particular point until the definition of this particular date. So, and that just emerged this week. So I believe that that changes the information, and therefore, the findings should be made because new information has emerged that has caused us to react to this determination. You know, you can't, you can't, we assume that, if we assumed, and those of you that voted for the budget, if you assumed that it was going to shut down on July 1, when it then doesn't shut down, it means that the dynamic has changed. And on a day-to-day basis, as that continues to progress, there's no reason for us to assume that it was going to shut down until the department declared that it was going to be shut down when we were in recess. That having been determined just within the period that would make these findings legal, I believe that Mr. Smith's argument is correct, that this is new information now, that it is not, it was not known when it was going to shut down. In fact, there was reasons for us to believe it was going to continue to be open because of inaction. So I concur with Mr. Kukorian, and I urge that we make these findings.
Ms. Hawn, for the first time.
I could call for the vote on the findings.
Do you mean you called the question? Okay. Is there an objection to calling the question on the findings? Okay, there's an objection from Mr. Smith that requires a vote? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. There's just Mr. Smith left, folks. And tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, four noes.
Okay, Mr. Smith, he's the only person left on the queue, so it's just one more speaker. Mr. Smith?
I just wanted the opportunity to ask the city attorney. Now, I know you will not opine yes or no, but in the viewpoint of the city attorney, in your opinion, does this meet the criteria of state law?
First of all, this discussion, this healthy, robust discussion underscores the fact that it's the council that makes the findings to determine whether there's an immediate need to act, which is clear in this case, and whether the need arose since the posting of today's agenda. The motion as written, in my opinion, the need did not arise since the posting of the agenda. However, there were additional arguments or facts that were brought up during the discussion. So I believe either way, it would be defensible.
Well, I just got to say--
Can somebody summarize that for us?
I was going to say, Mr. Alakon, that was a brilliant dance you just did for us, but I got to say, the city attorney's a good dancer, too. Again, ladies and gentlemen, this is not a new information. It is unfortunate the continuing debate we have around here. I would love to debate the issue because I have information that I think will resolve the issue. The Fire Department has done unique things, but on the findings alone, this does not rise to the level of the state law. It's nothing new. We've been talking about it. Your staff has been involved in that discussion, and they've been bringing great ideas, but it's nothing new that didn't come to anyone's attention. The fact that, if I was to take a gun and say, you know what, Mr. Alakon, I'm going to shoot you this afternoon, illustration, okay, I'll shoot you, Mr. Parks. And I chose, and I chose not to do it--
Let's make it a dart gun.
And I chose not to do it and did it on Monday, doesn't mean us not murder. Whether I chose to do it today or next week doesn't matter. It's still illegal. It's illegal, okay? The date that was chosen to do it, you all picked a long time ago. The fact that it was postponed has nothing to do with the legality of what you knew at the time. You knew at the time in July was going to be the date. The Fire Department tried to work out something, they chose to delay it. That doesn't change the fact that it's going to be done. That doesn't change the fact it's going to be done.
Yes, Mr. Risa?
We failed to find the findings. I'm wondering where we are in the agenda.
No, no, it was just to call the question, so debate on the findings continues.
Oh, I see, so we're still debating it.
Yeah, the findings.
Even more appropriate, we took a vote to end the discussion, not fail. I'm just trying to figure out where we are--
We're still on the findings.
We're still on the findings.
Yes, the Ms. Hawn's motion to call the question on the findings failed, so we're still just debating, and we'll add that, Mr. Smith, don't worry, to the book of quickly-shelled metaphors. Mr. Alakon.
Counsel members, you've heard it from your own city attorney, that this, that the findings The fact of the matter is that the findings that we make can have a dramatic impact on service levels. And it frankly, based on the opinion of the city attorney, is our decision about whether the findings should be made. I would ask that you make these findings, not only because they are defensible, but because they are necessary to improve safety in the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Kukorian, for the fourth time.
Just to kind of wrap this up, I mean, the murder analogy was a little too attenuated even for me to follow, Mr. Smith, but one that was, I think, more directly relevant, an analogy that's even more directly relevant for us, is that a few moments ago, the council voted unanimously to approve the findings as advised by the city attorney on an issue that could have been learned of long ago, but the council didn't. But it is important enough to this council to make the decision that, yes, because we learned of it, in fact, since the agenda went out, that we should go forward with that, those findings. That's what we did on Special One, just a moment ago, and we voted unanimously to do that. Now, had anybody chosen to do it, they probably could have found this out earlier. But we didn't. In actuality, we didn't, and the matter was important enough to the city to take emergency action. So right now, we have a situation where we're faced with a matter of relatively grave importance. And the fact, again, I didn't quite follow the murder analogy, but the fact that there was a date set in the budget of July 1, there was also, with that budget, the instruction of this council to the department, to the CLAs, to the CAO, to work and report back. That report hasn't come yet. So, you know, I don't blame the Fire Department at all for not acting on that, because they haven't completed this process. All we're asking today is to allow that process to be completed. So I ask for your eye vote on the findings.
There are no other speakers in the queue on the findings. So we'll take a vote on the findings pursuant to Rule 23. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, three noes.
All right, this is before us now for consideration. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's 10 vote item. My apologies. But it does not rise, it does not rise, so that fails. Let's take up Special Three, please.
And the city attorney will speak to the findings on this.
Don't use that metaphor.
Since the posting of today's agenda, the State Senate amended AB 2454, which may negatively impact the city's general fund by preempting local control over local communications users' taxes. There is an immediate need for council to resolve, to oppose the bill before the legislative session ends August 31, due to the impending recess. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Please open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
That, on the findings, does just, sorry, that's the 10, 10 item vote. Sorry, Ms. Perry, did you want to vote against the findings? I believe you, don't worry. I'm not changing anything from up here.
Can we take it off?
Yeah, we'll reflect Ms. Perry as a yes on the findings. That's 11, 0.
Okay, I didn't even touch it, I'm not even near it.
And, Mr. Parks did it.
After Greg was going to shoot me, I decided to.
All right, hold on a second. Hold on one second, Mr. Kukorian, just a sec. Okay, Mr. Parks.
Yes, I'd just like to make a technical amendment. On the second line, it should be Senate Bill, amended Senate Bill 2545. The motion is self-explanatory, it could have an impact negatively on our general fund if the state took over our local communication user tax. So we want to show opposition to that legislation.
All right, this is on, still on the substance, Mr. Rosenbaum?
No, 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 I'm ready to--
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Approved. Next item, Special Four.
And there is a Special Four, and the city attorney will speak to those findings.
Since the posting of today's agenda, the CRA has notified city staff of its failure to include $700,000 in Chinatown Tax Increment Funds in a previous request for approval of the Blossom Plaza project. Immediate action is required due to the impending council recess to reallocate $700,000 for the Blossom Plaza project before the close of escrow August 31. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Mr. City Attorney, can you assure me that the famous line from Chinatown is not going on here?
It's Chinatown, Jake.
All right. Please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
As now before us, anybody on the substance? Yes, if not, let's please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved in the last action of the city council before a two-week recess. If we can go to the next, everything we'll go forth with today without objection, we can go to the next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting referral.
They are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry, you're listed to be excused September 21 to arrive at 12:00 p.m. and on October 15 for the--
on October 15th for the entire meeting, both meet council policy.
All right, she's excused.
Councilmember Carden asks to be excused to arrive at 10:15 and leave at 1:00 p.m. on September 14th for city business, that meets council policy.
He's excused.
And Councilmember Alakon requests to be excused October 1st for city business, that meets council policy.
He is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Colleagues, any announcements over these next two weeks, Mr. Rosenbaum?
I just want to say to all of us, my colleagues, that I hope you all have a wonderful two weeks. We won't see each other for those two weeks, and may everybody come back safely and happy and back to the government work on the 7th of September. Thank you.
Mr. Parks?
I'd like to advise the public that this evening, where there's a candlelight vigil for Matrice Richardson, a young lady that's been in the news, they're going to hold that at Inglewood Park Marquetry at 3801 Manchester. Unfortunately, she lost her life and they just recovered her remains. Also, Ward AME, one of our large churches in the 8th District, is holding a free legal seminar clinic on Saturday, August 21st, 11:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. And finally, the L.A. Black Book Expo is having their annual event on Saturday, August 21st, at the Sheridan Gateway Hotel on Century Boulevard.
Thank you. Other announcements, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to invite everyone out to tonight's Bow Heights Farmers Market. It's a farmers market that started just a few weeks ago, and it's had a lot of success. We also have a farmers market in El Surino that started about the same time. And tonight, at the Bow Heights Farmers Market, we will have Felipe Sparza, who was here today and honored by the city council. We also have a horse exhibition and mariachi and lots of other music. And Bill, I will also miss you, too. I'll see you after break.
Mr. Keretz and then Mr. Labange. Mr. Keretz?
Just an adjournment in memory, I don't know if I'm-
Okay, hold on one sec. Mr. Labange on announcements?
Again, on September 4th, the city of Los Angeles will celebrate its 229th birthday. Mr. Weezer will lead activities at Alvera Street as we celebrate the city's 229th birthday as it was founded when nine people walked nine miles from Mission San Gabriel. And I wish everybody a safe end of the seven recess, and let's not forget the city's birthday.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Are there any other announcements, colleagues? If not, can I please ask everybody to rise for our adjourning motions? Mr. Keretz and then Mr. Alakon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of John Chase, who was an extraordinarily talented urban designer, a tremendous writer, a crucial member of our architectural community, and a remarkable icon in West Hollywood and for all of greater Los Angeles. He worked for the city of West Hollywood since 1996 until he passed away this Friday of an apparent heart attack at the age of 57. He was West Hollywood's urban designer, and during this time, he influenced and shaped a new vision for design and planning for the city. He was instrumental in the redevelopment of San Monica Boulevard and in the historic preservation update survey that was completed last year. He was vital to the general plan update that they're currently working on. And you can ask around West Hollywood, and I don't think you'll find anybody who didn't adore him. He was kind, he was marvelous, he was quirky. He was known and instantly recognizable as a great dresser with style, wearing red shoes, orange shirts and green trousers, and always a hat. He had a wonderful sense of humor, and his books on architecture always had a reflection of that. He wrote several books about urban life in Los Angeles, including Everyday Urbanism, Exterior Decoration, Hollywood's Inside-Out Houses, L.A. 2000 Plus, and Glitter, Stucco, and Dumpster Diving. He was a visionary and a personal inspiration, the kind of person who takes urban design, which seems very abstract, and turns it into something that's simultaneously practical, flamboyant, economical, witty, political, and humane. He leaves his spouse, Jonathan Callan, his beloved sister Laura, two nephews, a niece, a goddaughter, and a host of admiring friends. He is someone who inhabited every moment of life with vigor and beauty, and he will be missed. And a memorial celebration will be held for him this coming Tuesday, August 24th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in Fiesta Hall at Palmer Park in West Hollywood. And he'll be missed by me and everybody who knew him.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Rosenbaum. On this one?
John Chase was very involved in the historic Waddles Home Restoration, too, and he covered so much, so nice. Too young.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon and then Mr. Labange.
I'm sad to adjourn in the memory of a young man, who I actually referred to his uncle in Mr. Weezer's presentation to Felipe, the comedian I mentioned. I saw you perform at Gilbert Escavell's event in the San Fernando Valley. Gilbert Escavell is a comedian out of Pacoima, but his nephew, Rudy Escavell Jr., passed away at Hanson Dam Park. They found him in the restroom. He was only 30 years old, and this passing has a particularly interesting twist. Rudy was a young man who had been through several tragedies in his life. He lost two babies, one died in his hands, and he struggled with life after that and turned to alcohol in many respects. And yet, when he died, they found three bags of groceries at his side at Hanson Dam in the restroom. And it turned out that Rudy used to give to the homeless people at Hanson Dam. And when his father went to explore what possibly could have led to his death, he visited Hanson Dam and he saw some homeless people, and they, at first, were wondering who this guy was, and they seemed to be threatened, but he immediately said, "My son was the person who died the other day," and they all stood up, and they said, "Rudy was our friend, he used to feed us." And so I think that he is deserving of an adjourning motion because although he was a very common person, you know, he loved normal things, he enjoyed playing basketball, he was also a sort of comedian in his own right amongst his friends. He also had a very giving heart, and in his passing, his friends and family members for the first time learned that he used to take food and clothing and befriend the homeless people at Hanson Dam. And so we would, in his name, not only ask that we recognize his life of 30 years, but that we reinvigorate in our own hearts the notion that giving to those who have little is a noble cause. And indeed, in his short 30 years, he was a noble person in his own right. And so he leaves many, many family members. Of course, he'll be missed by his father, Rudy Senior, who is partners with Gilbert Escavell with GNR Entertainment, his stepmother Denise, his mother Nancy Hernandez, and his daughters Candy and Iris, his son Anthony, his brothers Joshua, Javier, and Edward, his sisters Amanda and Desiree, grandmothers Virginia and Yolanda, great-grandmother Juana, and many uncles and aunts and cousins, and especially his many friends at Hanson Dam. The family has taken up a cause to give to the people at Hanson Dam in a very private way. In fact, they took much food that was collected at his memorial service over to them immediately following the funeral. And I had an extended conversation with the group at Hanson Dam. He had his services this Tuesday, the 17th, and was interned at San Fernando Mission Cemetery. I think he is a good example to those who have little but who give a lot, and I think many of us can learn from people like that. Secondly, I'd like to adjourn, this is somebody that most of you are very familiar with, very sad to announce the passing of Mario Obledo, who served as Secretary of Health and Welfare from 1975 to 1982. He was appointed by Governor Jerry Brown and was the highest-ranking Hispanic for many, many years in California, and was recognized nationally for many, many actions that he was responsible for. He was a graduate of Harvard Law, but he also had a degree in pharmacy. And he was a co-founder of the Mexican-American Legal Defense Fund, excuse me, Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund, or MALDEF as we all know it, and also the Hispanic National Bar Association. He also served on the board of the Martin Luther King Federal Holiday Commission and was a faculty member at Harvard School of Law. He was known as the godfather of the Latino movement and was also the founder and president of the National Coalition of Hispanic Organization, and was recognized as a civil rights leader among the Hispanic community for more than 50 years. He was a Sacramento resident, he was a great leader, not only for his fight for civil rights, but also for his humanitarian causes. He opened the doors for minorities into the state administration unknown previous to that. He also received the Presidential Medal of Freedom Award from President Clinton in 1998, this country's highest civilian award for his advocacy and civil rights accomplishments. He also held local, district, state, and national positions in the League of United Latin American Citizens, and was also honored with the, I believe it's the Oatley Award, which is the highest honor that the Mexican governor, that, excuse me, that the Mexican government gives to a non-Mexican citizen. Mario Obledo was a very special person, had tremendous impact in the state of California and beyond. He is greatly appreciated by those who knew him, who served under him, and who worked with him for the improvement of our civil rights in the United States. He is a great Latino leader and not a household name, but certainly one of the pillars in the civil rights movement, particularly as it affected the Latino community. And we will miss Mario. We send our condolences to his wife, Kida Alcala Obledo, and his many family and friends who grieve as well.
Thank you. I'd like to second that. Mr. - yeah, all members, Mr. Labange and then Mr. Parks?
A great musician from East Los Angeles, Richard Lopez, who was part of Harlem the Headhunters, who had "Land of a Thousand Dances," which we all can remember, passed, he was 65 years old. That band opened for the Beatles when they first came to Shea Stadium, a very own band from East Los Angeles. I ask that we do adjourn in memory of Richard Lopez. Also, I ask we adjourn in memory of Edmund Shea. The Shea family was a great participant in many things good in the community, especially at Loyola High School, a member of the board of Loyola and Merrimack University, as well as Loyola High School. They were great builders. His father was in fact a builder of part of Hoover Dam, part of the Golden Gate Bridge. I ask for you adjourn in memory of Edmund Shea. Many, 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 many brothers and sisters and family members.
Thank you.
Much-loved man.
Thank you. We'll add Mr. Rosenbaum to that. Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, colleagues, I have a very unique request that we adjourn in memory of two relatives that passed away on the same day in separate incidents within hours of each other. First, Sherman Newman, was born February the 14th, 1945. He was educated in Los Angeles, he was married, had three children. He was very generous to his entire family, and he leaves and survived by his children and two grandchildren. William D. Newman Jr. was born July 11th, 1938, in Louisiana, although he was educated in Los Angeles. He joined the Navy, he stayed in the Navy until 1959. He also was married, he had no children. He worked at the Sops Car Wash for 24 years, then Bell Industries for four. He also was a family man, he survived by his family and friends. Both of their burial ceremonies will go on Monday, August 23rd, in 2010, 10:00 a.m. at Simpson's Family Marquery located at 3443 West Manchester in Inglewood.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
I would like to do this on behalf of Mr. Parks also, and to adjourn in memory of Joaquín Berceño, who was born August 16th, 1949, and passed away August 14th, 2010. Mr. Berceño was the father of Mr. Parks Legislative Deputy Lorenzo Berceño in Council District 8. Funeral services were held Thursday, August 19, at 8:00 p.m. at Iglesia de Dios, Cuerpo de Milagro, with a viewing from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And today, August 20th, a viewing will be held at Guerra Cunningham Bakes Mortuary located at 6351 Seville Avenue in Huntington Park at 10:00 a.m. Following the viewing, the actual funeral service will take place at Inglewood Cemetery located at 720 East Florence Avenue in Inglewood.
Thank you. Colleagues, we will next be in session on the 7th of September, that is Tuesday, but all of our offices will be open except, of course, for weekends and holidays, ready to serve the people of Los Angeles. So while council will be in recess, the city will continue to work, and the council offices will as well. Thank you, the members of public, for a strong start to the year, and we will next be back here right after Labor Day.